We're live.
All right, thanks, Ryan. Welcome, everyone. This is our City Council Special Study Session on Monday, July 27, 2020 at 6:00 PM. With the city clerk, please take role so the public knows who all is present from council.
Yes, Mayor, Member Anderson.
Present.
Member Questa.
Present.
Member Russell.
Present.
Mayor Protem Sierra.
Present.
Member Stone.
Present.
Member Wink.
Present.
Mayor Olson.
Present.
All members are present.
Thank you. Our first agenda item tonight is the June 2020 Financial Review, and Finance Director Maria Sabata is here to present and review this financial report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am going to present our financial status as of June 2020. I'd like to share my screen, so if you'll just bear with me for just one moment.
There it is.
Okay, you're able to see that?
Yes.
Great. So, in this packet, it is the first month that I am representing both the revenues and the expenditures, excluding the COVID-19 reimbursements and expenditures. I also included in the packets that you received, and it is included in the appendix of the presentation, the revenues and expenditures with those impacts included, but I felt for discussion purposes, it was best to extract that information from each of these slides. So as I talk through this, I'm going to actually talk about our numbers excluding the reimbursements and expenditures, so that you can see where we're tracking in both unrelated to any expenses related to COVID and the reimbursements that we've received for the CARES Act. So you can see for June or through June 2020, our receipts totaled 25.2 million. And again, this doesn't reflect any reimbursements that we've received related to COVID, and we're tracking 47.6% of budgeted revenue with 50% of the fiscal year complete. The revenue is also tracking ahead of last year approximately by 1.6% or $404,000. And I do plan on talking about where we think sales and use taxes will come in for June based on the collections that we received last week later in the presentation. You can see what areas are actually coming in higher in the different revenue category. I want to talk a little bit about sales and use taxes. I, you know, I do believe that, you know, we expected the percentage to kind of be flat somewhat to last year, maybe even below, but you can see through June, we're tracking just slightly ahead of last year, which is below what we expected from a budget perspective. But again, with the marijuana sales tax revenue, you can see, which is significantly higher than previous year, we are tracking about what I expected to budget, what I had projected when this all first began. You know, this isn't a guarantee as we go through the rest of the year, of course, particularly, you know, if there is a second wave in the fall, or if there are business closures as a result of COVID. But I think reasonably speaking, you know, given the impact that a lot of surrounding cities are seeing, you know, we're holding our own in the sales and use tax area. The other thing that I wanted to point out, and I pointed this out in the memo, another reason why we actually are doing better than we had expected is because you had passed an ordinance related to the multi-channel resellers, and we have been able to collect taxes for that over the past couple of months. So that impact will continue. And when I bring forth the budget next week, I'll talk a little bit about the impact, not only related to 2020, but also going into 2021, and how that, the ability for us to collect those taxes that were owed to us, the benefit that the city will see as a result of that. I also wanted to point out that licenses and permits are trending ahead of budget. They're slightly below last year, but we do expect that we will continue to trend a little bit higher than budget in licenses and permits, so that will offset some of the shortfall that we're seeing in other areas of the revenue. In the memo, I really tried to detail out the parks and rec expectation for revenue, given the current variances that the city is faced with in order to mitigate COVID-19 at our recreational facilities. And I believe that the past several months, I've mentioned that I felt that that was going to be where we saw the biggest shortfall versus the budget. And Director Underhill has updated those numbers for each facility, and it was included in your packet. And as of right now, if the variance remains the same that the state has put forth on our recreational facilities, we are tracking to almost a $1.5 million shortfall in our parks and rec revenue for the year. That certainly is unfortunate. But on a positive note, really, the team has challenged themselves to maintain expenses so that we remain at a break-even proposition for all of our facilities, and maybe even slightly ahead with cost control measures that they're putting in place. I'd also like to mention that, you know, we had committed as a team to make sure that we offset some of the shortfall in our revenue, and it does appear that our expenditures are tracking towards that net of COVID as well, and we'll talk a little bit about that next. I did want to include an update, and I'll continue to do this through the rest of the year, because as you know, you had reached a consensus that, and you'd asked staff to bring forth a supplemental at the end of the year because of all the changes that we would see in our financials related to the timing of expenses and reimbursements. But I will include in the packet the amount of reimbursement that we have received in each of the funds and what is still pending. So we have submitted two requests, and we have received to date $650,000, and we've requested another $200,000. And when this went to press, I did not have information related to the JAG grants, which I have received, and we were awarded the JAG grants, so we received another, or we will receive another $114,000 unrelated to CARES, but that was, that was a successful request as well. So I will include this in the next presentation, too. All right. So this is information related, that includes the information that I just shared. So with the reimbursements that we've received thus far, the revenue figure you can see is 4.1% above prior year, and you can see where it's tracking. So this will be the information that is shared with you when we actually come forth with the budget supplemental and the corresponding appropriation request as well. We'll be certain to keep you apprised of this information. So if you compare the two slides, you can see the differences in the intergovernmental revenue one item. That includes now the reimbursement that we received. Our corresponding general fund expenditures with 50% of the year complete are $26 million, 49% of budgeted expenditures, but this actually includes our COVID expenditures. The next slide actually shows it without our COVID expenditures, and you can see we are tracking 47.6% of budgeted expenditures with 50% of the year complete. So this includes the commitment of staff to scale back expenses again to offset some of our shortfall. But I would also point out, and I continue to point this out, that we have the police department now showing the fire contract that we actually pay one month in advance, so that will even out. That is one of the areas that's slightly above budget, and then also IT as well. That is starting to smooth out a little bit more because of the timing of the maintenance contracts being paid, so we can expect that we'll continue this trend of below budgeted expenditures throughout the rest of the year. One other point that I would like to make, as it refers, as it relates to our fund balance composition, you can see that we have not adjusted this slide to incorporate how we think the revenues and the expenditures will go throughout the rest of the year. It is, it's slightly challenging, again, with all the unknowns of variance requests and how those might, or variances that might change, or expenditures that we may be able to bring a little bit, bring in a little bit short to see where our fund balance might come in at the end of the year. The current estimate, given all the numbers that I've shared with you, and just estimates based on moving forward, is that we could end up with a possible $500,000 shortfall. That was my original estimate. I had said that revenues would come in approximately 1.6 to 2 million below. With that, we had a $1.1 million cost reduction that the staff had identified. And I think, given the more significant revenue shortfalls that we're experiencing in parks and rec, offset with some additional cost savings, that staff will most likely be able to identify throughout the remainder of the year, I would, I would expect that we would ask for an additional appropriation using a portion of the unassigned fund balance for 2020 in the range of 500,000 to 600,000. Now, that is all dependent upon how revenues go for the remainder of the year. With all the unknowns, it's certainly difficult to estimate those. But I do have, again, slightly good news regarding June collections, which June is a quarterly filing month, and so it really incorporated more businesses that hadn't filed, and, you know, along with the monthly filers. So we actually came in pretty good. These are unaudited, somewhat premature that I'm sharing this, but it is good news. Excluding audit payments versus last year, we expect that our shortfall is just $150,000. With audit payments, we expect that our shortfall versus previous year is going to be about $40,000. So that is not a lot considering the strain of the mitigation efforts. And again, it could be, it could be slightly different when I come back in July with, August with, with the July results, just given some other returns that may be coming in. Again, this is to prior year, it's not to budget. I mean, we had a 3% increase incorporated into the budget, but for quarterly filing month, we were quite pleased to see that the shortfall was not greater versus prior year than it turned out to be. So that's a bit of good news. So I wanted to go back, because I included in the deck as well, information, and I see that it is not in this particular deck, but I had included information related to the 10, the top 10 businesses, and also comparisons by month versus prior year. And I guess, as I open this up for question, I, questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding that information that was shared in your packet. So I'll just open it up if you'd like for questions.
Thank you, Director Sabata. It looks like Member Anderson has the first question.
Thank you, Mayor. And Director Sabata, was that $40,000 shortfall for the month of June? Was that year-to-date, or is that just for, for the month of June?
For the month of June. So it was, it was, so it will be July revenue, but it was collections for June that included monthly and quarterly filers.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Mayor.
Member Russell.
Thank you. Director Sabata, why and when did we move the fire part of the budget to the police department?
So, this is for reporting purposes, for comparison purposes. That was at the direction of City Manager Lewis, as far as that's where the responsibility is shifting. And I would ask Director Lewis if he'd like to share his information. And again, we will bring that forth with a budget supplemental as well, so that it could be, it can be re-appropriated as well. And if you'd like me to bring that forth earlier than the annual, as we had discussed, I'd be happy to do that.
Manager Lewis, do you want to go ahead?
Actually, I would like, if you can, can you restate the question, Councilmember Russell? I'm not sure I understand.
Yes, I just asked when and why the fire department budget was moved to the police department.
Well, I guess we would go back several months when we had a discussion about the reorganization of the city manager's office. And at that time, council was provided with information, both during a council meeting and an extensive reorganization memo that detailed that particular reorganization. It did not include any, you know, consolidation of departments, changing departments. It simply was a move of the Neighborhood Resources Division out of the city manager's office and the Fire Marshal's Office out of the city manager's office, in order to relieve some of the pressure of losing the deputy city manager. And so it was at that time when that change was made that this, that the budget also followed that.
Okay, so the, I mean, I think I remember the discussion about moving them out, but then the budget shifted because of that discussion. Or, I mean, we may have been told at the time, maybe I just don't remember that.
And let me ask Director Sabata a question. So Director Sabata, the, the budget has already been moved to the police department with regard to the Fire Marshal's Office?
Yes, for reporting purposes, and it will be officially re-appropriated through a supplemental by council, when we, when we move forward that supplemental at the end of the year, to include all of the changes.
And the reason that hasn't already been brought to council is because two weeks ago, council directed you to keep all supplementals together and bring them at the end of the year. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. But, but I will say, Councilmember Russell, that we can bring those appropriations to you more regularly. We just received direction two weeks ago to bring all supplementals to you at the end of the year.
Right. And, and I remember, I remember that discussion, and I remember moving the Fire Marshal under the police department, but I didn't remember moving the fire contract budget to the police department.
Understood.
Anything further, Member Russell?
Well, that all happened at the same time.
I would actually have to defer to Director Sabata of that exact timing.
I don't mean to be trivial with my words, but when the, the shift was made for responsibility of the Fire Marshal, that contract is part of that, that division. So that, well, it actually was part of the CMO budget, but it was determined that because the responsibility was going to be there, that the contract would move as well.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Member Questa.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Sabata. On the Parks and Rec projections, where we're definitely trending towards that loss, as you described, are, are those with the timeframe of Pirates Cove, and I would assume also the train at Bellevue Park closing on Labor Day? I think that that's when they've closed in the past. Is that when it's currently scheduled to just continue for the season?
I would have to ask Director Underhill what the closure dates are estimated to be. I don't believe, I heard that they've changed, but I'd like to reconfirm that with Director Underhill and get back to you if that's okay.
Sure.
Actually, Director Sabata, I'm on the call. If you want me to answer that?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so that is projections of Labor Day weekend. We'd be closing unless variances change and COVID changes. But right now, we're on track for Labor Day closures.
Very good. And is it just Pirates Cove and the train? Those are the two that come to mind. Are there anything else will be closing at that time?
No, I don't believe so. The rec center in Malle, everything else stays open through, through the year.
Sure, very good. Thank you, Director Underhill, and thank you, Director Sabata. Thank you, Mayor.
Director Underhill, just a clarification on what you just said. Can you still hear me? We usually, usually the Malle Center gets closed because they clean the pool. Will you be doing that, or no?
Actually, the ERC is the one that usually has a fall closure, and because of COVID closures, we took care of a lot of the maintenance during the previous closure. So we're not anticipating a full-size closure. It might just be areas that we have to shut down, but no major closure this year.
That is good. Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Sabata, for the presentation tonight, and thank you for confirming that 2020 revenues are basically in line with 2019 revenues. So it sounds like we're going to be slightly below that based off of some of your numbers, even without the COVID reimbursement, if I understood that correctly. I guess my question has to do with expenses. Where are we tracking in terms of expenses? If we're looking, you know, the full year out, are we still tracking even below 2020 projected revenues?
Yes. So, not below the revenues. So the numbers that I presented tonight, we actually are trending above 2019. We're tracking below budget. And what, all indication is that our expenditures are going to come in below what are, slightly above what our revenue shortfall is. So I would expect by the end of the year that we would have a deficit of approximately in the range of 500,000 to 600,000 right now. So when we went through the budget, the 2021 budget, we asked all of the directors to update their 2020 revenues and expenditures. And I'm going to be talking about that a little bit more when we come forth on August 10th with a proposed draft of the 2021 budget. But right now, with the current estimates that I'm seeing, it looks like for 2020, for the full year, we would have a deficit of 500,000 to 600,000 that we would come back and ask the council to consider using a portion of the unassigned fund balance to cover.
Okay.
And does that answer your question?
It does answer my question, but I guess I'm just a little bit confused about the reimbursement for the COVID-19 funds. I'm trying to figure out where that plays, is the $500,000, $600,000 shortfall including the reimbursement that we're expecting for COVID-19?
No, I, I've, I've, actually, you know what? Yes, it is. So, you know, we're expecting that that's going to be a wash, right? Because for anything that has been pre-approved for COVID expenditures, we are getting reimbursed. There have been some expenditures, but very few that were not included in the budget that have not been, have not been approved. Does that make sense for CARES funding?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, it does make sense. Thank you, Director Sabata.
Manager Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add that none of the COVID-19 expenditures were budgeted. So that's why, as Director Sabata points out, it's a wash. What we have, did not expect was, you know, nearly over a million, I believe, in losses in parks and recreation revenue. And so, as you know, we had other losses that we projected across all departments, and so, or, excuse me, all revenues. So the departments did already take the step of reducing the budget by about 1.1 million, Director Sabata. And so we reduced all 2020 budgets to try to compress that, that shortfall. But what, what I think Director Sabata is saying is that by the end of the year, we think we'll have essentially stopped the bleeding minus about half a million that we're going to propose taking from the unassigned fund balance.
All right, that answers that. I thought, I thought that you said at the beginning that none of this showed the safety, I mean, the, what should we call it, act, the CARES Act, but there is some in there.
Well, the reports, so I was very specific in the report, the revenues excluded the, you know, there were, there were, I showed it both ways, so that you could see it. And I was speaking to, all things being equal, the revenue shortfall, what we've already identified, that we would have to come back and ask for some relief from the unassigned fund balance, because we can't, we would not be able to cut the entire budget for the revenue shortfall, especially the parks and rec, as it, as it has, has been worse than we had previously anticipated, just given the variances that we have to live by.
Yeah. Thank, thank you. That clarifies a couple of things. And this has to be such a juggling act. Thank you for working on it and presenting it in a way that we can understand it. Your, your screen is still being shown, by the way. It's all right. Any other questions from council? I don't see any. So thank you very much, Director Sabata.
Thank you. Good night.
Appreciate it. Next up is Agenda Item Two, which is a court update with our presiding Judge Joe Jefferson, who's present to update the council on the Inglewood Municipal Courts. Welcome, Judges Jefferson.
Whoa, good evening, council. Real pleasure to be here virtually with everybody and see everybody's smiling faces. You know, I'd like to share my screen, I guess, to begin. So bear with me just a moment, and let me know if you're seeing my screen share here in just a moment. Sorry, bear with me just a second here. Counsel, are you able to see my screen now with the homepage?
No, we're, well, we're seeing your Microsoft Windows page, your, your screensaver, or whatever it is.
You don't see the homepage of the city?
No.
Let me try that again, then.
Well, we are seeing something from your, whatever screen you have.
Judge, this is Sean. I think you may have to stop sharing and restart. Sometimes it's, it's difficult to switch between screens when you're sharing.
Yeah, so I've stopped sharing. Bear with me just a moment. I'll try to reshare again. Are you seeing my home screen? Are you seeing the homepage now?
Yes, we are now.
Okay, excellent. You know, Honorable Mayor and Council, it's a real privilege to address the public tonight through City Council. So thank you so much for having me here and for setting aside the time for a really important and timely conversation. I'd like to begin tonight's presentation with the organizational chart. And as you know, due to the unique structure of our local government, by having an elected judge, we have many benefits, including true separation of powers, that I believe truly increases the trust in our local judiciary. However, the opportunities for collaboration between our council and elected judge are somewhat naturally limited, given that the city is a party in every dispute or case that our court hears. That being said, again, I appreciate the opportunity to discuss our joint responsibilities to our community tonight and highlight recent changes to our court operations. We're in a real dynamic time for many reasons, including the recent pandemic, as well as national and local refocus on justice reform issues. I'm going to try to provide a brief overview today of the organizational structure of our city government as it relates to our judicial system, as well as a brief overview of our court operations and recent changes, including showing our new informational video that I'll end my presentation tonight with. To begin, please understand that our court only hears cases that are initiated by a filing from the city of Inglewood, usually through a police or code officer at the city's discretion against a private individual that alleges a violation of our municipal ordinances. The city gets to decide who and what to charge a person with, and the city is represented in every case by an attorney, our city prosecutor. Our court has exclusive jurisdiction over matters that are only considered to be violations of our ordinances, and what we call concurrent jurisdiction in Inglewood with our state court system on state law. The court does not get to choose what cases we hear. Our court simply hears the cases the city has filed against people. Our court sits between the city and that person to resolve the dispute. Our maximum jail sentence is 360 days. So that means in any case where the government is seeking a larger potential penalty, must be handled by our state court system under state law. Therefore, people are exponentially more likely to have interactions with a municipal court than any other type of court. So we have a unique opportunity here in Inglewood to make a lasting impression in our community, to reduce recidivism, to increase public safety, and ensure trust in our judicial system. I'd like to take us to the Inglewood Municipal Code. I'd like to take us to the Inglewood Municipal Code and show the charter language that initiates the authorities of our municipal court, which is Sections 68 through 70 of our charter. I'd like to highlight Charter Section 70, which highlights the duties of our elected judge. That Section 70 of our charter reads, "The municipal judge shall establish the rules of court, and the council shall, upon recommendation of the judge, provide him or her with the necessary courtroom facilities, supplies, and clerical assistance." So I have to be careful in our conversations not to exceed my authority, as highlighted by Section 70 of our charter. For example, police matters are purely executive and policy matters are exclusively legislative. Municipal court matters, however, are purely judicial and fall under the authority of our elected judge. Section 70 also mandates funding of the court operations through City Council as recommended by our elected judge. Specifics on the court budget are presented to the public through the normal budget process, and on August 10th, council is scheduled to review the court budget, along with some other departments of the city in greater detail. We are a busy court, and we have handled nearly 5,000 city filings in the first half of 2020, and that represents an increase of nearly 35% year-over-year. Therefore, we continue to do more with the tax dollars provided to us. We are now handling many cases virtually whenever possible, and that new capability substantially increases court efficiency, ensures court, I'm sorry, ensures public safety through continuity of our own operations, and limits risk of pandemic spread to staff and the public. I've included our second quarter statistics report on our court activity, and we provide that information to the public on a quarterly basis through council communication. And we'll actually be providing this information on the court websites as well, I'm sorry, webpages as well, moving forward. We're currently holding positions open to try to keep expenses low, given the potential recession looming. However, I'm happy to hear the positive financial report through the midpoint. However, as council has heard, we do plan to expand services through a part-time court navigator position soon that will help close the service gap in our systems, particularly for those in our most at-risk populations. I hope some of this information and explanation of our system can help us all understand our unique roles in our system so that we can all work together for the best interest of our community. I really do appreciate this timely conversation, as our community and society has endured some dynamic changes recently, and our collaboration and better mutual understanding will strengthen our community. I'd like to quote our great State Supreme Court from select sections of an open letter dated June 11th of 2020 that is addressed to all judicial officers and employees, but really fits our conversation tonight, given our joint responsibilities to our community and that I wholeheartedly agree with. "We have been starkly reminded that confidence in our system of justice is fragile and not universal, and cannot be taken for granted. In the face of this reminder, we must move forward together in service of our mutual commitment to justice, a commitment that is emblazoned on the cornice of the Ralph Carr Judicial Center, which proclaims 'Liberty and Justice for All' on the entry wall of the building, which greets the public with Dr. Martin Luther King's admonition, 'Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere.' Dr. King's words remind us that our mission to provide our community with fair and impartial system of justice, and also of our need to hear voices of those that feel that the ideals of equal justice have eluded them. By redoubling our efforts to ensure that our decisions are free of bias, we can help build a more universal faith in our courts and system of justice. By continuing our work to diversify the bench, we can help ensure that our courts reflect the communities we serve. And by collaborating with community organizations, we allow ourselves to see the world through the eyes of those who have felt ignored or marginalized. Collaboration founded on a commitment to our common ideals and deep mutual respect breeds hope." Dr. King's famous line about injustice continued, "We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly." These words remind us that we share a collective responsibility for securing liberty and justice for all. The rule of law on which our nation and city is founded is sustained only by our society's collective belief in it and by our collective responsibility to uphold it. And with that, I would like to share our new court informational video that's available on our homepage.
There's no sound on it.
Oh, sorry about that.
I'm sorry, Judge, if you want to share a video with sound, you need to, there's a special selection of, of share with sound.
Okay, so I'm stopping my share there, and I'll restart the share. How do I do that? Oh, share with computer sound. I've got it.
And then when you can, Judge, if you could turn your video back on so we can see you too.
Yeah, okay. As soon as the video is done, I'll do that. Can you hear it now?
Yes.
Hello, I'm Inglewood's Presiding Municipal Judge Joe Jefferson. I'm here today to provide information on how we strive every day to serve you, our community. Our court was established by charter in 1959, and we enjoy the only truly publicly-elected judge in this state. I believe this ensures community trust in the local judiciary as being undoubtedly independent. Our presiding judge has the distinct challenge of both being a full-time judge and ensuring the successful administration of a large judicial system. Our local court has the unique ability to understand our community, its stakeholders, and the impact cases have on people. Our court's mission is to ensure justice with dignity for all. We live our values on a daily basis by being accountable, impartial, respectful, trustworthy, and welcoming. We also continually aspire to our goals of safeguarding individual rights, providing efficient, effective, and fair service, promoting rehabilitative and restorative opportunities, enhancing public safety, and collaborating with community partners. One of our court's primary functions is to deter and punish crimes. However, our court also has a rehabilitative and restorative function. Our goal is not just to punish crimes, but also to refocus an individual on education, personal responsibility, rehabilitation, and restoration of the community. On an individual level, we provide opportunities to get off the path of self-destructive, violent, or harmful behaviors. On a community level, we provide opportunities for victims to play a meaningful role in the process. Participation at sentencing through restitution, and if desired, through a new city-wide comprehensive restorative justice program, all allow the opportunity for victims and the community as a whole to begin to heal and ultimately reduce social angst amongst neighbors. We also have a shared mission with many local and regional agencies and have recently cultivated great partnerships for services. These partnerships help remove the financial hurdles to the education, mental health counseling, substance abuse treatment, and other services needed for successful rehabilitation. These new partnerships have also provided meaningful community service opportunities that provide defendants both an opportunity to right a wrong in our community through public service and an opportunity to get services and resources themselves, all at no cost to them or the court. These efforts help ensure personal responsibility is ultimately achieved, rather than simply a waiver or reduction of sentencing based on inability to pay. We are very proud of our new and expanded partnerships with All Health Network, One Good Turn, Arapahoe County, Goodwill, Arapahoe Douglas Works, Inglewood Public Schools, Big Brothers Big Sisters of Colorado, Inglewoods Change the Trend, local faith-based groups, and so many others. We now provide resource guides to all defendants, including one specific for U.S. military veterans and another for juveniles that connect them with local agencies that provide everything from food, clothing, and medical services to emergency housing. Our court is also dedicated to improving perceived fairness and efficiency within the legal system. We have embraced the national trends of both justice and bond reform. We have embraced many new forms of expanded alternative sentencing for those that qualify, including work release, in-home detention, special jail treatment and education programs, in addition to our local rehabilitative and restorative practices. We have also implemented many new bond practices, such as setting lower cash-only bail amounts and defaulting to personal recognizance bonds whereby no cash or surety guarantee is required to get out of jail, particularly for those with minor violations and little or no fare to appear history. When a defendant does fail to appear for court, we attempt to contact that person to reset the matter before a warrant may be issued. We have also implemented court date reminders by phone and hope to expand to text or email soon. Our focus on fairness and efficiency has also led to recent improvements in access to justice. The court has a new standing court docket time where individuals without the means to post bond can turn themselves in and go before the judge for bond consideration. This process allows the defendant to proactively address their issues, usually without being arrested, and is an efficient use of system resources to resolve their matter in a timely manner. We are one of the busiest courts in Arapahoe County. I'm very proud of our staff and their efforts to keep the court running with great fairness and efficiency while maintaining justice with dignity for all. Through system efficiencies and restructuring some staff duties, we continue to focus on doing more with the taxpayer dollars provided to us. We are in the process of implementing a new case management system that will enhance functionality both internally and for the public. The hard work has begun to configure the system to best meet our community's needs. We are focusing on online capabilities, such as viewing your upcoming court dates and providing options to resolve your case, including additional payment options, all in an effort to avoid unnecessary court appearances for the community and to increase our operational efficiencies. We are in a dynamic time for municipal courts with more changes than ever in the last few years and more changes likely coming due to our evolving community needs. I'm providing information to all stakeholders in our community to ensure we're ready for our court's future. It is an honor to serve as our presiding judge, and I wanted to thank the public for an opportunity to serve. I love being able to work on the rehabilitation and restoration of our community on a case-by-case basis. Our court's work is extremely challenging, but also extremely rewarding. Thank you for your support to achieve our mission to ensure justice with dignity for all.
Okay, counsel, thank you for the opportunity to present. I do stand for questions at this time.
I think Member Wink had her hand up. Do you still have?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Judge Jefferson, for coming today, for sharing those words of reminder about our foundations of our judicial system here in this country. It's always good to hear those, and especially good to hear those now. I have a small question about your court navigator, that part-time position that you're not, I believe, filling right now. You've got a pause, basically. But I just wanted to understand a bit more about that role. If you do have that position defined, the scope of it, it sounds very interesting and of huge value. I'm just curious about the parameters in terms of the skills that they would bring and just how they would support that community that may be a little bit more challenged within the court system.
Well, and I think some of that is still yet to be determined. We have received CARES funding for that program through the end of 2020 that is going to be more COVID-focused. And of course, the requested funding for 2021 serves some of that similar at-risk population in a slightly different way. And so, you know, we're going to be coming on the 10th with information about the upcoming budget, and perhaps that might be an opportunity to kind of delve into that a little more in detail. But I'm going to work with the city administration to try to define what that looks like, either this year or next.
Okay, fantastic. And actually, may I ask one more question, Mayor?
Yes, please do. Number link. I think it is a good point to ask, what would you want to come in August 10th with that request? So Judge knows exactly what you're looking for.
Excellent. And so, when you talked about community service, I recognized that it's an area I've had interest in because of work I've done on recidivism on the research side, the statistics side of it. But I'm curious, and this may not be the place to explain this, maybe it's a later date, maybe it's sharing a document with me, so I'm recognizing this. But my question is, what are the various options for community service here through your court system? Do they directly align with the list of partners that you presented on one of the slides? School Board, Change a Trend, faith-based organizations, you named quite a few. Is it restricted to that list? Does it include all of that list, or is it far beyond that? And what is the process of sort of engaging that list? What's the process of refining, refreshing, adding, making sure that at all times that list is engaging the needs or engaging the population and really serving those up-to-date needs of the community? So it's a win-win on both sides.
Well, just to address, you know, what we're accepting as community service hours, right now, the court's accepting community service hours from any nonprofit in the metro area that is willing to supervise and sign off in these hours. So any nonprofit by the state. And so it's a pretty wide definition. But I think what you're discussing is perhaps the resource guides that we also have available at the front counter. And these are attempting to connect folks with local nonprofits for that. And there is a lot of crossover. You know, a lot of folks may go there, do some community service hours, and also look for some resources. You know, keep in mind that what basically we've brought is a privatized community service model. You know, pre the last recession, we had a full-time person who would put vests on folks and supervise them cleaning up the side of the road or the parks or something of that nature. You know, and unfortunately, that position was downsized, you know, through the last recession. And so, right now, what we have is a privatized model that creates a win-win-win for the nonprofit to help serve their mission, helps plug a gap in social services, creates an opportunity for that defendant also to make up for a right, or I'm sorry, make up for a wrong in that community by doing some community service hours. So it's really been a great program so far. We've had a real lot of success. And a lot of what we're doing is just in lieu of fines and costs. So if you can't pay your $75, I might give you community service credit at $15 an hour towards that in lieu of the fines and cost, rather than simply waiving those.
That's fantastic. Is that a standard operation of offering that community service in lieu of fines that are difficult to be paid? That sounds tremendous, like it.
Certainly appreciate your support with that. I will say it is a relatively unique model that we're sort of pioneering here. So I appreciate your support.
Yeah, fantastic. Thank you very much for this update, Judge.
No, thank you.
Member Questa.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Judge, for joining us this evening. And I've got a couple of questions regarding the second quarter court statistics for 2020. Certainly some positive news coming out there. I see a really great reduction in domestic violence. The one that really jumped out at me, though, was traffic infractions. Obviously, you're not the one issuing these, but I'm wondering if you can speak to any of this. And what I noticed was that in Quarter 2, 2019, there were 839. In Quarter 2, 2020, we're at 1507. It nearly doubled. Needless to say, Quarter 2, you've got April, May, June, pretty great reduction in traffic for at least April and May, and is to stay with COVID. So do you know what the approach was there from EPD? And if that's a better question asked to EPD, I'm certainly happy to do so. Now, having said that, too, it's very frequent that I hear from citizens that there are concerns regarding traffic. So, you know, I don't think there'd be any unhappiness with enforcement, but it was kind of the substantial increase coupled with, I'm assuming, as a decrease in traffic that jumped out at me there.
And recall, last year, when I came and provided an update, there was a substantial decrease in that number, and the council asked me about the decrease. And so, you know, it's difficult for me to speak on enforcement actions. You know, as you stated, you know, not certainly over any management oversight over the PD and, you know, why they decide to enforce something or not enforce something. Is it their discretion? And so I certainly don't want to overstep and overspeak on that issue. But, you know, obviously, there has been some substantial increase in traffic enforcement during that period that you're describing. Does that answer your question? I apologize.
Certainly. I think you've redirected me towards the police department, and I will head that way, Judge.
Thank you. Don't get me wrong, you know, keep in mind, the other thing I'll mention is domestic violence being down. Keep in mind, we're only one court where we can file. And I think that, you know, perhaps during the COVID period, that they were filing these domestic violence cases in county. So, you know, what you're seeing here may not be an apples-to-apples comparison, given the pandemic issues.
Understood on that, too. Very good. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Member Stone.
Thank you. Good afternoon, good evening, Judge. Happy to have you here. Always good to see you. I'm interested in those bail reforms that you were talking about. Can you give us just like a brief overview of what that looks like?
Yeah, you know, effectively, the bail reform we've undertaken is defaulting to personal recognizance bonds whereby no cash or surety is required to get out of jail if you haven't been charged with any substantial offense that risks the public safety, or you don't have substantial fare to appear history. safety or you don't have substantial failure to appear history. You know, as I reported to you, I think a year or two ago, you know, the state legislature has mandated on municipal courts what types of offenses are being, you know, appropriate for cash bail. Basically, offenses that are determined to be petty offenses by the state or offenses where there's no state equivalent to our municipal charge cannot be held pretrial prior to being found guilty or admitting guilt on a matter. And so, those people must be released on personal recognizance. I've worked with our police department, and now our police are equipped with personal recognizance bond paperwork whereby they can reset that defendant on the side of the road, perhaps without arresting or transporting that individual all the way over to Arapahoe County Jail. So it's really a cost saver all around. Now, that being said, we've also defaulted, you know, for folks who don't qualify perhaps for personal recognizance on smaller cash-only rather than cash surety amounts whereby the defendant can post their own cash amount, and if they comply with the condition, show up to court, they can use that money towards fines and costs rather than paying a bail bondsman as a portion of a fee who wasn't really adding a lot of value to smaller municipal offenses. That being said, on domestic violence cases, we still do work with sureties on larger bail amounts where they do potentially add some value if somebody, you know, fails to appear and absconds on their court date.
Amazing. I appreciate that. And if I could ask just, that definitely answered my question. That was great. Actually, you talked about some stuff I wasn't even aware of in there. So I'm really happy to hear about the coordination with EPD in facilitating, you know, no longer having a need to transport people all the way across town and, you know, potentially disrupting their lives more than absolutely necessary. The other question that I wanted to ask about was kind of a follow-on to Member Wink's question. So you talked about community service as a fine kind of deferral program or replacement program. What other, are there any other recidivism reduction programs that we're currently engaged in?
Um, you know, ultimately, most of what we do is aimed at reducing recidivism, right? I mean, ultimately, if I could put myself out of business, that would ultimately be the goal of the court, you know. But, you know, while the PD remains busy, we also remain busy. And so, it's a function of enforcement and ultimately trying to individualize the circumstances of each case to try to figure out what's going on there, to try to get that person to rejoin the community as a whole and become our bosses once again, right? And so, that's what I tell a lot of our staff members, that right now, this person might be a defendant in our case, but the goal is to rehabilitate that person and restore them back to the community and restore those relationships to the community so that they can, once again, being a contributing member of our city of Inglewood.
Excellent, Judge. I appreciate your perspective on this and the way that you talk about it means a lot to me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember. I appreciate your efforts, too.
So I don't think anyone else has their hand up, but I will follow up with that one. So community service isn't the only thing that you're using for restoring people back? What are some of the other best practices that you're finding you're having some return on investment?
Well, a lot of stuff that's featured in that video that I just showed regarding connecting folks with the education, resources, mental health, and substance abuse counseling that they really need to rehabilitate and removing some of those financial hurdles towards those resources. You know, I found that, you know, we have some great educational opportunities here with private companies, but they sometimes require out-of-pocket monetary $75 or $80 fee for a one-time class. And so, that's why really, I guess, at this moment, I'll highlight all health has really been the godsend to our community. You know, those mental health and substance abuse counseling services are really necessary in our community, and they help folks qualified intake evaluation for Medicaid. So for the overwhelming majority of defendants, these services are not only free to them but free to us. And so, they're accepting right now as many referrals as I can give. I assume at some point, there may be some limit to that, but right now, they are accepting all referrals and providing a wonderful service to folks and connecting them with a whole host of opportunities. And so, you know, it's funny, when one door opens, it seems that several others open as well. And, you know, I'm doing this, you know, on a no-cost basis through some of my out-of-court time, and that's why I think some of this Court Navigator may help coordinate some of these activities and connect people with those services. And that's why I'm excited about that program, and I look forward to chatting with you guys about that on the 10th.
Yeah, I think one of the questions I have with it, and you can tell us maybe on the 10th, is what sort of impact have you seen from these? We have community members who think that, you know, we're seeing the same people go through systems and creating problems. So are we having some impact? Where is the return on some of these? If you can, if you can see those and report those as part of, you know, I hate to, I hate to use it as return on investment, but it is, and where can we see that, you know, something done differently actually is a benefit to the community rather than incarcerating or other kinds of things? So perhaps something like that.
I'll try to provide some statistics on that information. Anecdotally, I'll tell you that we've had a lot of success, you know, from the homeless vet who picks up an open liquor ticket and through some of the resources guides provided at the next time is living at one of our, you know, low-income apartment buildings, is, you know, being provided with some substance abuse treatment and has rehabilitated their relationships with their family. So I really have a ton of anecdotal information, but I'll also try to provide some statistical information that might help support that because I do suspect ultimately that, you know, positions like Court Navigators will ultimately be cost savers for the government, as you stated, Mayor Olson, regarding, you know, hate to say it, but sort of return on investment regarding the public's investment in that dollar and, you know, ultimately, what is the result that we're looking for.
Great, thank you. I don't see any other hands up. So thank you for coming and presenting tonight. We'll look forward to hearing more in August.
Thank you all. You guys have a great night, a great meeting.
You, too. All right, our next section is our kickoff to the Title 16 Community Outreach in Joint Session. And this is our planning manager, Wade Burkholder, is here to present, along with a number of the Planning and Zoning Commission members, I believe, and will be discussing Title IX Unified Development Code Assessment project. The presentation is supposed to only be 10 minutes, I hear, and then we're going to have a good 50 minutes for some robust conversation, I hope, that will help give us the next steps.
Good evening, Mayor. If I could, if I could take the first 30 seconds of the 10 minutes. I would just like to offer an opening comment regarding this project. This project will solicit the community's ideas and preferences regarding Inglewood's current and future development pattern, and the subsequent redrafting of Title 16, the Unified Development Code, will shape the community well into the future. And it's a major undertaking, and the staff would like to thank you all, both the council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. We'd like to thank you in advance for your commitment and ongoing guidance, both this evening and as we continue through with this effort. So with that, I will turn it over to Wade at this point.
Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Mayor, and members of City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission members. I won't take very much time either because we do have a short presentation to get to, but I do want to thank you all again for allowing us to kick this off tonight and go forward and learn your expectations of the project and talk about how we proceed through next steps. We do have two of our consulting members online as well. I'll introduce Jennifer Gardner from Logan Simpson. Jennifer will be the project manager from Logan Simpson, working with myself as the project manager on the city side to really start and kick off this listening phase of the project. The idea is to, is to listen to the community and hear their feedback of what's working, what's not working. We'd also have Mr. Mark White from White &amp; Smith, a planning and law firm online as well, as one of our other consultants. So with no further time from my end, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer so she can go through the PowerPoint slides and we can get to the discussion.
Great, thank you, Wade. I am going to share my screen now. Can everybody see that?
Yes, it's beautiful.
Okay, fantastic. All right, so we're here tonight, as everyone has said, to talk about the Unified Development Code Assessment. Okay, let me get my mouse in the right place here. We're going to try to do this in about 10 minutes. We're just going to do a quick project overview, and then we'll do an exercise with a bunch of questions for you guys and some next steps. The project overview, so city planning staff, a steering committee that we're still developing right now, and the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council are all partners in this project with our project management team. Mark White, that's on the phone today, myself, and then Bruce Meehan, who's our, one of our principals at Logan Simpson. The project support that we have listed below, we have a multitude of people that are behind the scenes with us to help with this project. And we've listed three here this evening. Melissa Ruth for code support, Christina Kager, who was heavily involved in some of the previous Inglewood plan efforts, and then Reese Wilson with White &amp; Smith. The primary project goal is, this was actually a quote from the RFP, and I thought it really captured the goal of the project really well, and I won't read it word for word, but it's, the primary goal is to take the core policy documents already developed for the city of Inglewood and compare that against or with the community goals and values, which we have tons of community goals and values that have been flushed out from other previous efforts, and we'll continue to dive deeper with this, with this effort to align those two with a, with land use regulations that are sustainable for Inglewood. Our anticipated outcomes of this assessment would be to make sure that dimensional regulations align with neighborhood character. So, you know, building on the comprehensive plan, character areas of neighborhoods, making sure parking regulations promote walkable, healthy community, building on complete streets efforts, so on and so forth. Sustainability goals are reflected in the Unified Development Code, and that there are regulations that both promote and do not provide any barriers to different housing options to create diversity of housing in the community. Our process has three main phases. So our first step or phase will be to review the Unified Development Code and core policy documents. Then our second step will be to listen to the community's goals and values. We'll be reaching out to the community in a variety of ways, and then we'll combine those two efforts to provide recommendations to ensure that the Unified Development Code reflects the vision for the city of Inglewood. So in that first step of document review, we do a thorough top-to-bottom review of the existing Unified Development Code. We make notes off in the margins. We will type up tons of questions. Our review team will have a lot of conversation back and forth with each other, with staff, with the steering committee. So it's a very thorough word-for-word read-through of the document. We review any recent development applications for any inconsistencies, any, if there's a lot of variances happening in a certain area, we can kind of look at that piece of the code to assess how, how we might be able to revise regulations to help, help out that situation. We will review Inglewood forward, the ULIs, healthy corridors, next steps, and other policies. And we're aware of a lot of these documents and have been involved in a lot of them, but we'll, we'll look a little deeper through the lens of the Unified Development Code to make sure we're pulling forward any policies that need to be pulled into the code. The results of this effort will be a preliminary review matrix, and it's pretty extensive. So it'll be both kind of red lines of the, of the document and a large spreadsheet-style matrix of what we're finding, what we might suggest for revision, what might be missing, that type of stuff. The community engagement portion of this project is, is a really big piece of the project. So we will talk to many different stakeholders, developers, applicants, staff. You guys are all stakeholders in this project as well. We'll have a virtual town hall kickoff event, probably looking like it's going to be maybe early September at this point, because we want to have some of this initial stakeholder outreach and steering committee discussions before we have that kickoff event. And that event will look something like this tonight. We'll have a presentation about what we are, what we're trying to get out of this project and have some, some accompanying quick polls and questionnaires and different types of activities to go along with that, to get, to get feedback from the community. We plan to do neighborhood by neighborhood outreach, so reaching out to each distinct neighborhood, possibly utilizing the park spaces as advertisement and small gathering spaces. We'll engage through social media, and we'll have a series, like I said before, of quick polls and online questionnaires. Given the COVID pandemic climate, we anticipate most of our outreach to be actually virtual, but we're very flexible right now. We do small group meetings, we do virtual outreach. We have been just flexing with all of our clients, and we have all of that under our belt, and we've been very successful with it for many years. So it's, it's very easy for us to slide our outreach kind of right or left to hit the situation. The results of this effort will be a summary that we'll present to you guys again later this fall. Issue and identification and analysis. So this is where we take everything we've learned from our document review and our outreach and pull it together and really synthesize it and work together to provide some recommendation. So we'll develop a report of findings, we'll develop an annotated outline, and that's really the key to this whole document. It will outline where existing regulations occur, where new regulations should occur, and where things just need to be moved around or changed around to make the Unified Development Code work really holistically. The results of this will be a final report and outline presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. Here's a really quick schedule, and I think we're actually looking almost a half a month off right now. We were talking about having our steering committee kickoff in July, but it looks like that's going to be in August. So if you look at this schedule and just kind of keep everything about a half month off, I think we're right on track for that. So ongoing project management through the whole six-month process, preliminary document review we've started now, and we'll start to kick off that community engagement in August, September. And as you can see, we have six steering committee meetings pinpointed and three public outreach event series and two additional engagements with you guys later on in the process. I believe that is the end of our quick presentation, and we'd like to go into the exercise now. We have a series of five questions here that we'd like to ask, but I want to ask one question before we get into these that I want you to be thinking about as you're giving us your answers, is what is your goal for this project? So if you had a specific goal in mind, what you think the outcome should be of this project? We'd like to know that in addition to these five questions. So I'm going to actually turn it over to Wade, and he's going to kind of field the questions.
So, yes, thank you, Jennifer. If we could, if you opened it up to the floor, Mayor Olson, just to get your feedback on, on any expectations you have of the project, and then maybe start with the first bullet point as to what you feel is working well with the existing Unified Development Code. And we will be taking notes as we hear your answers, so we have a good idea moving forward some of the areas we should concentrate on.
All right. So is the question, what is your or our goal at this point of this process?
Yeah, we had, we had mentioned a few of, you know, what outcomes we are expecting from the project, but if you all have any different expectations of the project, we'd love to hear them.
Great. Who wants to kick us off? We put this on our agenda a while ago, and here it comes. Member Stone, you get to go first.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. So I'll say, I'll stick to the bullet point questions that you've got here. I think that one of the things that it is doing well currently is diversifying the design aesthetic of our neighborhoods. What I don't necessarily think that it's doing well is kind of meeting the expectations of the existing residents of those neighborhoods. I do not know anywhere near enough about the application process at this point, though I- Um, I do not know anywhere near enough about the application process at this point, though I have been trying to get up to speed on it. So, uh, that's a failing on my part. I need to come in and sit down with you guys and have you kind of put me through an intensive on that. Um, and I do think that there are design standards that need to be tuned up. Um, I think that we need to put a little bit more, um, specificity in some of the uh, what's the right word I'm looking for here? Um, requirements or or, uh, guardrails, if you will, will, um, on what can or can't go into, uh, a given place, um, based on the community around it. Um, but I think that you guys are definitely to that last question, I think you're definitely on the right track. I think that you're presenting to us a very comprehensive um, approach to, uh, the feedback that we've been receiving, uh, in council and that I know, um, P and Z has been receiving as well, and that I know staff has been receiving from the community. Um, and I know that this is a delicate delicate process that requires kind of a a tightrope walk. Um, so I appreciate what you guys are doing, um, and please, uh, don't hesitate to reach out to me for any help that I can provide, whether it's, uh, community engagement or what have you.
Right. So I I'll go back to asking that first question, which I don't unless you don't mind if we do it like this, Wade.
Um, I I do not mind. Um, we can, we can go one person by one person and just take the whole list. That's that's great.
Okay, it it would be helpful, though, if any of us have some expectations for this process that were not articulated, that we get those out here tonight, right? I think that's what you're really looking for. So to 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 begin with. So if you don't have one, that's fine. But, um, uh, member or Mayor Protem Sierra is next.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and thank you, Wade, for for the presentation and everyone, um, from, um, I already forgot the name, it's something Simpson, Logan Simpson, I believe.
Logan Simpson.
There we go. Um, but thank you very much for coming tonight. I guess overall, my, to me, the, uh, Title 16 kind of seems very static to me in a sense. So I I think in terms of what's working well for me is that it's easy to explain aspects of it, especially things that the, uh, you know, some, um, citizens are asking about, but obviously that that also kind of plays in with what's not working well, is that it's very, it it's, uh, you know, there's not much advances, you know, obviously, we're doing everything kind of, uh, uh, piecemeal with like ADUs and STRs. Um, so I guess in in what I would like to see for this or what my expectation for this would be is just understand, you know, what is it that we're not taking advantage of, like that that, you know, there's new developments out there that, you know, regard tiny homes or something along those lines. I just, I I just think it's just been a very, it's an older document that's just not taking advantage of new research and new development standards that we need to be considering. So for me, it's just like, have we gone far enough with ADUs? Have we gone far enough with STRs? Uh, do we understand those well enough? I guess that that's wrong wording in terms of STRs, but, uh, but also tiny homes. Obviously, I I would like to see, uh, you know, what else can we do for low income housing or even like, uh, middle income housing? That that's that's a concern of mine in terms of the development that I'm seeing within the city itself. So just understanding best practices or what things can we be doing from a city perspective to ta- uh, kind of take advantage of that. And obviously, on the business perspective, or at least with the businesses, you know, it's kind of antiquated the fact that we can't have, uh, body piercing shops or tattoo shops within, um, the major district within Inglewood. So that to me just doesn't make any sense. So understanding, you know, what other businesses aren't allowed that should be allowed. So having that holistic view as well. But for me, it's just getting, you know, obviously still listening to the people that are living here, but also understanding, you know, what type of modifications can we make for things that, you know, weren't relevant back in eighty six or whenever the last time we did a full rewrite of the code. So, um, that's what I would like to get out of this. Um, you know, in in the coming months.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Sorry, Member Anderson.
Thank you. Yeah, I was trying to unmute.
I thought maybe you could hear me.
Yeah. Uh, and thank you, thank you, team Logan Simpson and, uh, Community Development for all the work you've put into this. Just in terms of expectations, I guess, I I was reviewing our, um, strategic plan that we just approved last, uh, I believe it was last Monday. Uh, and that's really what I, I, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to see driving some of the decision making process here, because this is this is stuff council all agrees on, or as a, you know, a majority of us kind of pulled together, and I think a lot of this, a lot of this we all agree on, and and a lot of it, much, uh, much of it, there's a a good majority of us that agree on. But the two things that really jump out from the neighborhood section of our um, of our strategic plan are the walkable and affordable, which I think both of those were kind of identified in your list of of priorities in the in the slides that we saw. Uh, but specifically, there's just been a lot of of knowledge that has developed over the last ten, fifteen, twenty years in terms of how do you build a community that is walkable and affordable. And I think our Title 16 code is pretty antiquated and represents a a way of of shaping the community that's kind of straight out of the fifties. And I think we're, I think it's it's time to kind of look to update and see if we can um, look at ways that we can make sure our Title 16, our development code, um, specifically addresses affordability and walkability. And I I do think those things are are really are, that's where I think we have systematically built in into our current, um, development code. Uh, kind of an anti affordability bias. I think there's a lot of things that we can do. ADUs were kind of a good start in in the right direction, but, um, uh, as as I've learned from Cole Peterson and other experts on ADUs is that, that there are poison pills. We've created an ordinance that allows for them, but doesn't really make it so people want to build those. I'd like to see if we can clean that up on ADUs. Um, also, missing middle, some of the missing middle housing, the, um, allowing those more more broadly, not just, you know, we've got, we've got duplexes in Inglewood, and I think a lot of the problem people have with duplexes is they're they're not affordable. Are there ways we can shape our development code that will actually allow for uh, affordable housing in that missing middle range rather than, you know, high end housing in that middle range, uh, missing middle range, the the duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, those kind of things. So I'd like to see those things looked at, see if there's a way that we can update our our development code to systematically allow for more affordability, so that we don't have to just look at subsidized affordable housing as the solution to the housing, the housing crisis. And then walkability, man, when I look at a, look at an aerial map of Inglewood, we have vast, a vast sea of parking across the city everywhere. We have, we have tons of parking, and I don't, I don't, I think it's totally incompatible to think that we can have a walkable city and also have our city be a destination for cars. I don't think you can walk across, you, I don't think you can walk across the sea of parking and, uh, and also, um, you know, to and 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 have it be feel like a walkable place. That's, I think that's what I'm driving at there. And then finally, uh, one thing that wasn't in there that I'm really interested in is seeing how we can get our neighbors more productive. And I think in terms of just financial productivity, we have a decent home, uh, uh, allowance for home based businesses, I think. Is that in Title 16, or is that in another portion of the code?
Yes, that that is a part of Title 16, home based business.
Okay. Uh, I think that could be expanded for increased allowances for business, especially in COVID. A lot of people have lost their jobs, and they're going, okay, what can I do in kind of a gig economy to make some money? Um, and while we have, you know, I think we have a good start there. I think there's some more things that could be allowed, allowing home based business in in ADUs, allow people to expand into their garages for home base. Some of those things that are currently disallowed that I would like to see that I think could bring more financial productivity to our neighborhoods and make it so that our citizens can um, generate revenue off the property that they own or rent in the city as well. So those are a few things that popped to the surface for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Next is Member Cristo.
Uh, thank you to our guests this evening and, uh, and to staff for bringing this forward. Um, uh, you know, first and foremost, and I know it's been outlined already, I I'm really looking forward to hearing back from as many citizens as possible. This has been an ongoing issue since I've joined council, and I know prior to myself, and, uh, and we've heard from many up to this point, but I think the more voices we can get on it, the better. Um, as I look at the questions, the bulleted questions, I think, uh, Mayor Protem Sierra hit the nail on the head in that the existing code, it's defined well. I think that it's very black and white. Uh, but then we've had people into the not working well portion who have pointed out they don't like the set bulk plane. It's clearly defined the bulk plane, but there's people that expressed um, dissatisfaction there. Um, same with setbacks, uh, how we're treating different zone districts, um, why why certain zones are more subject to redevelopment than others. Uh, now, these are just things that I have heard, um, and I think that, you know, that's probably shared, and there's probably many other things that I'm not mentioning that other folks have heard. So one of the things I really like about existing code, I think it's defined. I think that we do need to work with those definitions. Some of the ones that I've already heard that that to me can get a little bit more subjective, what's affordability, what's walkability? Just saying that to me doesn't define what that's going to mean in terms of what can I build? What defines walkability? I think if we're going to work these things into the code, we need to be very specific about what constitutes that. My definition of affordability may be vastly different than somebody else's versus someone else. So same with walkability. So while I understand these are definitely portions of the conversation, uh, I think that, again, the beauty of the current code is it's well defined. I hope that our final project uh, remains well defined, but but it definitely needs some tune up, as as many have pointed out, and I'm looking forward to hearing from the citizens on this one. Uh, thanks again to staff and our guests and Mayor.
Thanks, Member Cristo. Uh, Member Russell. You're muted.
Am I?
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you, um, Mayor, and thank you, staff. Um, I, um, I have a couple of things. Are you also going to entertain questions from city council that we have for you?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. First, I want to start out, though, with where we're at, um, right now. Um, I do appreciate staff bringing this forward, and, um, my main goal for this is protecting the current residents and their property investments that they've made in this community, sometimes really long. They bought into a zoning district, and I I know that there is a lot of frustration in some districts that both rules and those systems that they bought into when they invested in their property have changed dramatically. And, um, so I I do think one thing that we definitely need to cover is height restrictions, setback, and lot coverage. Um, the community has made those things very clear, uh, to us, and, um, so I want to make sure those things are included. Um, I also think it's important that any changes we make need to fit in the character of the neighborhoods. And I remember it's probably been about five years ago now that, um, we were talking about the, um, comprehensive plan and character of the neighborhoods was brought up, but what we've been seeing, uh, does not fit that. And so I agree, the definitions um, need to be very clear. Um, and I agree that a lot of the code is divine defined very clearly. Um, but that is one thing I think that we definitely need to define is what character of the neighborhood means. Um, so I I appreciate things that have already been shared, and so I just, I have some questions, but, um, if if we can just address that after this part of it, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Member Wink.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, okay, I see Member Stone has his hand up. So I have a few things, Mayor. Um, I'll just keep checking in with you till you stop me.
Well, I I will, because I think Member, uh, Russell just noted she's got questions too. So let's just take it a little bit at a time.
Okay, so my first comment, um, well, okay, I have a question first, and it's based on slide that I believe it was the second slide, which was titled Outcomes of Assessments.
Member, we could, could we stay with the question we asked first and then go?
Yes.
So if you don't have anything, that's fine, but.
The first item I have pertaining to this question list is, um, I would like to see um, more representation of, more representative preservation of historic areas, um, especially as we see more modern, a more modern built environment. And I mean this in terms of facades, buildings, both residential and commercial, um, and then areas, not just neighborhoods, but areas within our city. And I say this, I want to be very clear, I say this, um, this desire for the 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 deliberate, um, maybe project level work on preserving historic pieces in the city alongside allowing, continuing to allow flexibility for individuals moving here to, uh, redevelop properties that are not historic in terms of construction and, um, uh, design. Um, along with that, I want to say that, you know, in in polls that we've done previously, it's clear that while a tiny group of the the citizens are concerned with bulk plane and the height of buildings, it's not a, it's not a citywide, um, desire, um, as we've seen from our citizens. We don't have the bulk of citizens asking for this. So I think that it's okay to allow, um, the flexibility of building. Uh, people come here and buy those duplexes and tall buildings. Um, but we should also preserve those, um, those historic structures and areas of the city and celebrate them. Um, and there are a variety of ways that we could do that. So I'll stop there, Mayor, but I have more.
All right. Member Stone.
Thank you.
Actually, yeah. And so and let's let's, since we're in the second round of people making comments, go ahead and ask questions too.
Okay.
Just keep it to a few so that everybody gets to keep going. And, um, Wade, if you have certain questions from this list that you still want us to get at, tell us, okay?
Okay. And I'll I'll mention also, I don't know how you want to bring in the planning and zoning commission, if you want to hear any thoughts.
Well, it's, yeah, it would be great to get their input too, but why don't we do one more round of council?
Perfect. Thank you.
Go ahead, Member Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I I guess I didn't anticipate the level of specificity that my fellow council members were going to get into. Um, so, uh, I would like to mention a little bit of specificity, specificity, you know what I'm trying to say. I don't know why I can't speak right now. So, uh, Member Russell brought up something that that really matters to me quite a bit, which is that character piece of the definitions around it. Um, and one of the definitions that I've struggled with, um, is, uh, varies greatly. Um, I think that varies greatly means relatively little, realistically speaking, and that, uh, we need to focus on things where it appears as though the code is well defined, but in fact, it actually says little or nothing of substance. Um, and those are some of those areas that I'd like to, uh, to make sure that we look at. Um, I think that it would have, uh, changed. Um, so, uh, frankly, it would have changed a de novo hearing that we had earlier this year, um, if there had been any specificity in the code around that language. Um, I do have a question, which is, can you give us a little bit of, um, uh, a little bit more depth on what the steering committee, uh, will be doing around this project?
Yeah, ab- absolutely. Great question. Um, the the steering committee really is going to be, um, you know, the group that is really helping us reach as many aspects of the community as we can. So we're hoping that they are the champions that will take, um, you know, these these bits of information and topics out into the neighborhoods uh, and help us and help us gather as much of that information as we can. Now, they're also going to be, you know, helping us, uh, work through a lot of the the major topics like affordability and uh, parking that we mentioned. So we're basically, they're going to be the sounding board for, um, you know, the major topics and that we're hearing. Um, they're also going to be helping us get this information out to the community and to as many different demographics of the community as we can. Um, you know, the steering committee is not going to be, and and as we mentioned, it's not been formed officially yet. Um, we're still, you know, kind of reaching out to to certain, uh, people, uh, to try to get, you know, some agreement that they would, they would be willing to provide six, six meetings, about two hours each between now and the end of the year. Um, but we're looking at, uh, residents that, um, have had some bit of history with with the unified development code, whether they have been passed, uh, applicants to the Board of Adjustment, or, um, persons that we have, you know, heard come speak before planning and zoning and city council that we know have an interest in certain areas of of the unified development code. So we're we're just going to, uh, establish this group as a working, as a working group that, um, you know, when we're listening that um, you know, when we're listening and hearing all this feedback from the community, we can process it, help digest it, and help use that um setup as, as arms back into the community from that point. Um, and, and hopefully, they can tell their neighbor, and their neighbor will tell their neighbor. And, you know, word of mouth um is really um important uh with this project, especially, you know, given now that we might not have as many opportunities to meet face-to-face with people. So that's, that's how we're setting the Steering Committee up. There will not be any, any sort of policy decisions or any sort of um code writing that this group will do. Um, it's just helping us digest what we're hearing and then helping us reach back out with that information.
Excellent. I appreciate that. And I do have one other thing that I wanted to bring up, um, since we are getting into some details, um, and that is uh green technologies and pollinators. Um, and so I want to make sure that that's something that we're focusing on, particularly around commercial properties um where uh there might be a bit more capacity um to, you know, shoulder the, the costs of um instituting green technologies and pollinator refuges and stuff like that. Um, but the more that we can incorporate some of that stuff into the very code itself going forward, um, the better I think our city will be. So, okay, thank you.
Great.
Director Power, before I move to the next council member, do you have something you want to insert here, or do you want to wait?
I did, mayor. I just wanted to, to expand on Wade's previous uh discussion around the Steering Committee and its membership. As he said, we have been brainstorming folks from across the community um that we've reached out to. But one of the things that we would do is um, once we've heard some commitment from those folks, we definitely want to share that list of folks with you um in advance of finalizing the, the Steering Committee. And also ask you if you have anybody else in the community that you think that we should try to reach out to, um, to make sure that we have that good cross-section of folks who are assisting us with this project. So we'll be doing that in the near future.
All right, thank you. I realize I didn't give you my uh, my takeaway, what I hoped for. So I'm going to do that before I go on. Um, I, I think Mayor Pro Tem articulated it well, so I'll just quickly reiterate that. Um, I think it's a recalibration time in really looking at currently what's happening in development, what's happening in housing, what's happening with families. We're a first-tier city. We're not the same suburb that we were 15 years ago. Um, we're quite different, so how do we adjust in a way that is a little bit more balancing of where we are currently? And I know that might mean that some people are unhappy and some people are hap, are happy, but we can find some sort of a collaborative process. So I'm hoping that that will mean we work well together. I'm also reading a book that I just picked up. Um, I, maybe some of you have seen it, Design, uh, Segregation by Design. Um, and I, and it's been a really powerful book to look at how local decision-making and inequity seem to intersect at this point when we're developing unified codes. Um, and I'd really like to look under the hood for where those might exist. Maybe there isn't any. May, maybe there aren't, but I do think the affordability that has been mentioned, it might be there. Um, do we prefer developers that are doing high-end over others? How do we create something that's different for all levels? The crime rates came out yesterday and showed that when there's real diversity in economics in communities, there's less crime. And when there's this stratification, that's really difficult, um, we, we don't do well as a community. So I'd like to try and ensure that. And then the last question I have for you all is, do you have a book that you'd like us, or something you'd like us to be reading along the way to inform ourselves, besides just your data on our city? But are there some articles that you're all sort of basing some of your thinking around that would be helpful for us to be thinking through in the next three to four months? I'd be very open to reading those, you know, debating them, discussing them, whatever is needed to get to some kind of a combined agreement about the next stage approach.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll definitely uh keep lookout for some good articles. Um, I know I've read several lately on, on the state of parking. Um, so you know, that's, that is an issue for uh Englewood. And so, yeah, we'll share those as, as we see that.
Great, thanks. Um, Member Anderson, you're next.
Thank you, mayor. Um, having trouble with that unmute button tonight. Uh, the, uh, a couple of kind of questioning kind of comments is, the first one is, in terms of engaging community input, I think I, I remember something from uh the community survey last year that it seemed like uh some 50% of our population is new to the city in the last five years. I don't know if that rings a bell, if it's that high, maybe I'm a little high, I don't know. But we've had a huge turnover of population. And a lot of these people are, you know, are younger and working and uh maybe have kids and can't make it out on a, on a Monday night. And I know you guys are working hard to figure out how to, how to receive community input from a variety of sectors, but I would really like to hear from that segment of the population. Um, because I, I do think we tend to hear uh from a lot of longtime residents, which is wonderful. And I think their, their voice is incredibly important as well. But I want to make sure that we're hearing from all the segments of the population. So do you have ideas, specific ideas along how to, how to incorporate input from the, the newer demographics in the city?
Yes, and, and that's where we are really looking um hard at the, at the various community parks. Uh, we know that um, you know, young families will frequent them. And so if we're set up there, um, you know, not necessarily even with a quote-unquote event, if we just have sort of a pop-up booth um there uh at various parks around the city. Um, you know, hopefully, we can reach a lot of those uh younger families that you're mentioning. Um, we also have uh plans to actually uh go into certain businesses with information. So um, people can pick up flyers or take polls at, at, you know, as they're, you know, enjoying dinner or some evening and, and so forth. So uh, the, the real key is going to be um, we will need to go to the community. Um, we can't expect people um, you know, with the young family, young children, to come to a Monday evening meeting uh all the time. So the, the real key will be to get ourselves out into many, as many locations in the community as we can, uh, so we can get that cross-section. Um, you know, we've also thought really hard about those that don't have access to uh computers. So if we set up something at the Malle Center or um in some location um with a higher population of, of possibly elderly or, or something like that, we can, you can make sure we're trying to get as much word-of-mouth going um uh in those areas of the.
Thank you.
Can I have one more?
Go ahead, quick, yeah.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Uh, the, the, the other thing was, in terms of, wha, what is kind of the avenue for, you know, I know we have the um Urban Lands Institute study and some other things like that. What's the avenue for a kind of acquiring what the latest knowledge is on what people are doing for zone? I mean, I know the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, both mentioned, you know, kind of bringing it up to date and what the latest things are. What, what is the pathway for getting the, you know, I think of new urbanism kind of thinking and even um, and strong towns? A lot of these organizations that are really put a lot, have put a lot of thought into zoning, zoning stuff. What's the avenue for getting that information injected into the conversation? And maybe even education for people and those kinds of things?
Uh, we certainly will have um, you know, links to those types of articles. We'll have, um, I don't know that we'll have, you know, hard copies of things like that printed off, but certainly uh digitally, uh, we can have links to the American Planning Association, which has a lot of best practices um for those, those topics you're mentioning. A lot of affordability best practices. Uh, you know, we do have BII. We have um also a lot of uh really good experience with communities up and down the front range that, and, you know, the state of Colorado as a whole um to where we can uh, you know, talk with them. You know, some of the communities that have already gone down this path of um affordability and, and new urbanism, as you mentioned, you know, we can, we can have a conversation with them and, and see uh, you know, what their lessons learned ha, have been with those topics. So um, there's, there's quite a few different outlets that we can tap into. And we're always happy to um share um that information with you all in terms of educational materials. We'll just, we'll just work through and talk through how you all would like to see that information as we go forward.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Member Russell.
Thank you. Um, so, Will, going back to um Councilmember Anderson's question, will the Steering Committee have access to the meetings and the diverse cross-sections of citizens that you um are going to attempt to reach?
Yes, because we're being, we're being very thoughtful in, in reaching out to the, the Steering Committee members that we think will have uh access uh to those other areas of the community as well. So, you know, we're really trying to, you know, not cluster citizens in one uh area of town. We're trying to spread, you know, the, the members out throughout the, the town. Uh, mix of business um members as well. We've asked to join the committee to get that viewpoint. Um, so yes, we're, we're really trying to be very thoughtful in how we brainstorm. Um, you know, the, the members we're asking to be on the committee. Um, you know, we're asking some of the prior uh planning school members as well um that we have uh met and worked with, just to try to get more, you know, try to get that broad base of, of citizens that we can can, can use to get our information out.
Thank you, Anderson.
Go ahead.
How big, or how many members do you envision the committee having?
We'd really like to keep it to 10.
Okay, and then just one more question. Will any of these meetings be recorded and open to the public?
Um, we have not um at this point um decided uh that they would or would not be. It's certainly something we are open to talk about. Um, especially recording. I mean, that's something we can, we can discuss and talk about internally.
Well, if they're all on Zoom, it'll be very easy to keep track of if you put it on recording.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, so um, it looks like we have other folks that want to jump in here. So should we open us up to your, um, to the, our Planning and Zoning Commission too?
That would be terrific if you could.
Colin Hagerty, you're on Planning and Zoning, right?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you all for uh having us here today. I just wanted to follow up on one topic that Wade had uh mentioned. And one of the reasons why I believe uh Logan Simpson was uh selected for this uh process was their tracking system of, of comments. Um, and some things we had talked about uh in our, in our last meeting is, is one of the things that I think will really help make sure that those voices from all sides um kind of funnel back up into that um overall committee to make sure that none of those voices are, are lost, that, that tracking system will very much be a, a big part of, of that um process, I guess. So just wanted to kind of note that. I have a few other things, but I'm guessing there's uh some other items that everyone wanted to chime in on as well.
If, if you have something else you want to say, go for it a little bit. Member Wink is next, but.
I'll go one more then. Um, one of the questions, we did have a, a bit of a pre um discussion here to go through a few of the items. And one of the questions was whether the, the floodplain regulations uh would fall into a, a different location. And um, as being something uh near and dear to my heart is one that jumped out to me and, and talked to a few um constituents uh at other uh cities around, around the area. And they really warned against doing that. Um, you know, if you move it out of the um, um, you know, this format uh of the, of our Title 16, you, you lose a little bit of strength in enforcing it. And uh, since uh our Title 16 really regulates is the, kind of the strongest uh law here for us on planning and zoning, that um really to make sure, we, we try to keep it there to, to make sure that we're protecting the, the public and, and the welfare um with keeping the uh, the floodplain regulations in that document.
It's helpful, thank you. Um, Member Wink.
Thank you, mayor. Um, so uh, thank you, Member Stone, for bringing up the um pollinators, et cetera. Um, I, I want to ask from Slide 2, "Outcomes of Assessments." Um, how is this group defining sustainability in this context? I mean, it's talked about as if there's an established knowledge base around what that means here for us, for council, for this city administration, when I know there's no cohesive plan about it. Um, so I would like us to really define or be, be sure that we know we all are on the same page in terms of what sustainability means um for this project. Um, also, uh, Ms. Gardner, you, you said uh you guys are all stakeholders in this project as well in one of those earlier slides. And I want to ask, um, is City Council actually included in, in the project plan uh beyond that community outreach event? Because there was a later slide where um, the timeline slide, yeah. And um, and the CC I saw was at the community outreach section, that juncture, as well as in the reporting stage, obviously, you're sharing reports with us. But I wondered, no complaints, I'm just curious to know if that, that will be the totality of the involvement. Um, yeah, and then um, Mr. Burkholder, in terms of engaging um an equitable cross-section of our community, especially that new, as Member Anderson mentioned, the new members of our community that haven't lived here for 37 years, but that do comprise a significant portion of our community and our um, our, our community. Uh, have you maybe thought about engaging Madeline Hinkfuss? Um, our neighborhood resources commu, our coordinator, given her strong engagement uh thus far with her neighborhood um formations and activities? I've been planning something in my neighborhood, and I know that she's had tremendous response in terms of neighborhood ambassadors coming forward and, and creating, pulling neighbors together. It seems like a really great way to um plug in and share um information and news um in neighborhood groups with, with constituents that may still not go to the parks, even though they're of that age group and, or maybe the bars or et cetera, maybe they are, they do have young kids. Um, so that was another suggestion I thought of while you were ma, making that comment. Um, and then one final note, um, I actually just ordered the book that Member Olson suggested. And um, given Member Stone's staunch support of not repeating historic patterns of um displacing certain population groups that are maybe being highlighted now in our culture, um, and the fact that our uh friends leading this project didn't necessarily have any books uh at this moment, I'm sure you'll recommend some in the future. But I would like to, to step forward and suggest that, that that very book, Member Olson, mentioned that all of council get a copy of that book and read that book. I think it'll help us uh support and fuel our, our thinking around this as we move forward in the coming months. And my thought was that maybe we could use some of the unused council budget from maybe CML that didn't happen this year, and just buy seven books. Uh, maybe the city manager could do that for us, and we could have something to read together. I also have another suggestion. It's um, it's a book I've long loved by Ray Oldenburg um called "The Great Good Place." And it talks about development um and how we form our community, how we develop our community and why, and historically how it's happened. A lovely book. Um, and then finally, on uh, on the Member Anderson's comment regarding walkability, uh, I, I agree with that piece, that I would like to see that represented as well. And I think, Member Questa, you mentioned, you know, just that, that's sort of broad, just what do we mean by that? Um, how does that manifest itself in a plan? And I was envisioning something that has built-in security features, something that's uniquely paved and maybe that extends throughout the city. I, I haven't researched enough to know whether that's good or bad, but it'd be really cool right now, I think, or interesting and fun for the city and maybe beneficial on many levels to, that the walkability extends through all four districts. Um, I think traditionally, we think walkability, we think medical district to city center, and then up and down the center of Broadway. Maybe it goes beyond that, I'm not sure. But that's it for me. Thank you, mayor, for allowing me all those comments.
Thanks. Um, and Member Russell, uh, you're next. Can I ask you, remind me, what was the book that we were, you were reading? And I read it too, and I can't remember what it was. A couple- Thanks. Um, and Member Russell, uh, you're next. Can I ask you, remind me, what was the book that we were, you were reading and I read it too and I can't remember what it was, a couple of years ago?
I was just thinking about that when uh, Councilmember Wink was talking. It's called Better Not Bigger.
Oh, yeah.
And I, I think that would be worth um, looking at again too. So um, the, the one thing that I was remembered uh, when one of the other council members was speaking um, about um, green policies. I, I just want us to be very careful not to tie the hands of developers, builders, property owners to make the development unaffordable, because I know that we were looking at some green policies when we were uh, building the new police department and it would have been very expensive to add some of those things in there. So while we're, while we're talking about this, I, I think we just need to be careful not to tie anyone's hands in um, in the Title sixteen piece of it. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Right, and I'm gonna tell, I'm gonna ask that the uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, feel free to turn all your videos on and, and put your hand up if you want to chime in here. I think we've heard from one of you, but, but let's open this up to everybody. Member Quest is next.
Thanks, Mayor, and it'll be brief. I think it's more how we think about uh, our citizens and, and how we, how we think the opinions they're gonna get back to us. Because I don't necessarily think that somebody with, that's been here thirty years or someone that's been here thirty days will have differing opinions. I think that we are gonna have people that have many shared opinions uh, regardless of their residency. So I think in just searching respondents back out de- due to how long they've been here, I don't think should be our singular approach. Uh, I, I certainly, I understand that we want to get as many folks as possible. Uh, but I think strictly focusing on somebody who's been here X amount of days, so I think they're gonna have X view that differs from somebody who's been here, you know, for some extended length of time, I think is the wrong approach. And I've already heard the, the statement that uh, that kind of an absolute statement on citizens, that they didn't care about the bulk plane and, and I only caught that portion of it. And we know we've had citizens express concern about the bulk plane. We're never gonna get a hundred percent of citizens to agree on anything, but I don't think we should dismiss anything out of hand that there are any citizens that are concerned about it, because, because we know that that's not the case. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Quest, I didn't hear anybody tonight say no one cares about the bulk plane. Did somebody say that tonight?
Uh, then, then I may have misheard a, a, a member earlier, and if that's the case.
No, yeah, I don't, I don't think, I don't think anyone said that. If anything, it's on the table, it's something we need to look at.
Very good. Thank you.
Uh, I would love to hear from Planning and Zoning too about how you want to work with us as council. Sometimes this can be a really treacherous time for the two and I don't want it to be like that. I hope it's very collaborative and uh, we, we, we give each other what we need in this process. And I don't know, Wade, if you have questions you want to hear from, from all of us.
No, I'll turn it over to um, I think Chair Freemeyer of the Planning and Zoning Commission has a comment or question.
Go ahead.
I, I appreciate that. Um, I just, I don't necessarily have comments per se. I, I think they're more directed towards being questions and I want to start it with saying, Jennifer, thank you. Thank you for being here, because in fact, having a professional firm uh, in the process, I think is gonna be most helpful. And understanding there are no, no ness-, there's not necessarily a winner or a loser in this deal, but that the winner would be the community of Inglewood, Colorado and ultimately within the, the confines of the metro area and perhaps a stage for what future development would look like um, across the country, rather than being a pro- poster child on the other side of the spectrum. So Jennifer, I appreciate you and your firm being here and, and the staff, thank you for choosing them. I'm sure they're gonna do a great job. So that's, that would be my first comment. A couple other ones. I'm really looking forward to understanding the, the term character, both in terms of how we define it, what government's role is, how we make that operational going forward, how it's enforceable, and how we look at this from a historical perspective as we define character, understanding that when the development happened in the boom of the fifties and sixties or, or forties, fifties and a little bit of the sixties, that was completely out of the character of what it is today that we see that some people don't like. So I am fascinated to understand how we define that. Number two. I want to understand in this process, a level of support. In other words, I have seen in my experience of now twenty-one years, a groundswell of one. And that is not necessarily a groundswell, that is a vocal person or a few vocal people. What I want to understand is a groundswell of support. In other words, who wants what and how does that really fit? Okay? And I think where we're gonna look at our professional staff that we've brought on, both uh, in terms of our consulting firm and our professional staff that we have on, on uh, on salaries, I'd like to understand the framing of the question. So if we ask somebody, do you want green, sustainable communities forever and ever amen? They say, well, of course we do. We want to make sure it's good in perpetuity for generations to come that will look at us as being wise stewards of future resources. If you ask the question in a different way and say, and that will cost you personally a hundred thousand dollars for everybody in your family, how interested are you in having that great, sustainable community forever and ever amen? It's a different answer. So I'd look to professional staff and our professional consultant to help frame the question in a way that people can understand it not only from an operational perspective, but from an individual perspective, so they understand exactly what it is they're answering yes or no, or some variation thereof. Okay? Number three. I think we need to put whatever we do in terms of changing anything within our development code within the United States federal code as it relates to the notion of taking. This taking would be municipal state, county or state governments or federal government taking or removing or limiting the enjoyment of a particular person's particular property as it relates to the zoning that they had at the time they purchased the property. So the Supreme Court, District Courts, Federal Courts, State Courts, Municipal Courts have ruled across the country regarding taking. I'm not saying we're doing that. I'm curious how any rela-, any action would be related to that particular notion and how we would have a defensible position. Okay? Um, number four. I believe it is imperative that we understand the financial analysis of what proposals would happen. In other words, if we do X, whatever that may be in the future, we understand why with a particular level of confidence. And that being the case would set the stage for a future council, or this council perhaps, to understand the ramifications of the, of the decision or decisions that they may make. Um, it would also help tremendously for the Planning and Zoning Commission to be able to put in preference what is most important, what is least important, and be able to make recommendations accordingly to the, to uh, her honor and the council uh, generally. Uh, last item. I want to be very, very careful that we don't, we don't solve today's complaint by creating tomorrow's law of unintended consequences becoming full bloom. And so to that extent, I think if we understand the financial consequences, the legal consequences, the structural consequences, have an agreement relative to character in regard to theme and how we want the, the community to look. And we haven't just looked at ourselves, because we have a tremendous understanding of, of the wisdom of government when we look at what was Cinderella City, what today is empty. Okay? I think we can do better. And I think that requires a great deal of input from the development community so that we understand what it is they can actually do within confines and then they understand the if-then statements and that means what in terms of development as far as they can see. Identification of who those players are, I don't have, but I'd leave that up to our professional staff and uh, our, our professional consultant. And that's all I have to say about this. I'm looking forward to it. It's, it's, it's a great challenge and thank you so much for putting it in front of us.
Wonderful. Uh, Judy Brown.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks to everybody who's um, put input. I certainly don't have as um, concise a comment as uh, Mr. Freemeyer. However, um, there are a couple of things that I jotted down that um, raised some questions for me and other people have brought up the importance of definitions. Um, I think it's interesting in two different places. We talked about ne- neighborhood character and also distinct neighborhoods. And unfortunately, my um, feeling about that is those are more in people's minds than they are in reality. So neighborhoods change. Um, you know, I, I feel like we have a neighborhood where I live, however, as people move in and out, you know, it shifts and moves. And I guess I want to um, understand how we're defining neighborhoods, because I don't think that it's as concise or clear as, or at least what I felt was being um, talked about here and even with um, I forget her name. That uh, Councilmember Wink um, mentioned her name, but um, you know, I know that we're, we're really trying to work with neighborhoods, but I'm interested to find out what those neighborhoods are. So that, I think that that's not as well-defined as people think they are. I've, I've lived here for twelve years. I don't feel like I have a defined neighborhood that the city would um, determine, and if there is one, I'm unaware of what it would be. Um, the other comment I wanted to make is, it, it's a little bit on these first two questions. What's working well with existing code? Um, I think uh, we do have a lot of uh, clear information, but what's not working well is I don't think we have enough flexibility and I think that someone else was alluding to that, us being able to be a little more, more nimble when new things come up. And, and I would hope that we would take away from the ADU process taking as long as it did and short-term rentals. Um, it's not like short-term rentals were a surprise, but we took a long time to um, even work through that. Um, sort of an unwillingness to accept that times are changing. And I would hope that we learned from this whole COVID experience that, that I'm not sure we're gonna know what the, the fallout is later on. But I do want us to, to truly understand how important this process is, because a lot of, there is a lot of influence and power existing in Title sixteen for what the future of Inglewood's gonna be. And um, there's a lot of ideas about how you make a, a community more affordable, but it is so complex um, that we need to be careful that we, if you want to talk about unintended consequences, it's about trying to solve a huge problem with a regulation. So I just want us to be careful about that. Um, and I'm looking forward to reading this book, but um, one of the, just another comment from my perspective is I did a commercial real estate class kind of thing that I was um, accepted into um, uh, last, a couple of years ago now. One of the most interesting things and before I was on Planning and Zoning was a day-long um, seminar with the Denver Planning and Zoning and um, in that big of a city, I don't think people realize how much influence that they as a group have in forming, in changing the, the future of the city. People think that they can vote on things when in fact it's already placed in the code and, and they don't have an opportunity to have a voice because it's in the code. And as we can see, changing the code is, you know, a monumental task. I just don't want us to dismiss the importance of what we're doing and it's not just a matter of, you know, changing one line in the code because it fits in with what somebody thinks that particular neighborhood wants, when in fact, I think we need to be a little more holistic than, than going to the neighborhood level. Um, so that's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Uh, Member Anderson is next.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank, I just want to thank the uh, Planning and Zoning Commission. I know this is gonna involve a lot of work on your end and I know you guys already just hearing um, uh, Chair Freemeyer, Commissioner Brown, this, this the thoughtfulness that you're approaching this with. I really, really appreciate that. And just to, to kind of respond to some of the character comments, I think you're, I think, I, I, I think that the, the thing that stands out to me about the character of Inglewood's neighbors is that they're dynamic and diverse. You know, I live, my house is right next door to a house that is um, less than five hundred square feet and I really like that. We have really small houses, we have really big houses, we have mid, mid-mod houses, we have, we have every, and, and, and you can't, you know, other than maybe um, raffle acres, you can't really define a neighborhood that has just one style of house in Inglewood. And I love that. I love that about Inglewood, is that it's so diverse and I would hate us to um, get to the place where we def-, we, we so narrowly define the character of a neighborhood that we eliminate the kind of diversity that's, that we've gained over many, many years of, of allowing development and redevelopment and additions and growth and, and shrinking and all of that stuff that has created such a unique city. So I really appreciate the thoughtfulness on those comments um, from the commission. I really appreciate all the work you're putting in on this as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I think I'm gonna stop us there.
Mayor.
Yeah.
Mayor, Michelle Austin has a, has a comment. She.
Okay, sorry. And I thought I saw Kate Townley with her hand up too, but Commissioner Austin, go ahead.
Oh, well, I'm so sorry. I had to join. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I had to join through, I don't know, through the web or something, because it was, something was not quite right. So anyway, um, I think one of the, the, to answer Wade's first question is, for me, is that I would think that we need to take a look at all of this in terms of Inglewood. We're not a mini Denver. We're not a, a twin of Littleton. And um, so, you know, we don't need to have, as everybody on the Planning Commission knows, I'm a parking nut. Um, so we need to have, make sure that although we are taking care of design standards that take into consideration, you know, walkable and all that sort of thing, but we also need to have more open spaces and that's part of Inglewood. We're not smashed together like Capitol Hill and Denver. And that's the one thing I think um, we need to um, add to the list of things that we need to consider. That's all.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, next is, I believe it's, yeah, Kate Townley. Commissioner Townley.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I, I really just wanted to, to echo a lot of the things that have already been, been said um, by other commissioners and some members of the council. But I, I just wanted to say I'm really excited about this process and this opportunity to work with the community and really look holistically um, at the code and look forward rather than reacting to a particular project at a particular time. So I think we have a great opportunity with that. Um, and I guess the big thing is I would just want to make sure we're not getting in our own way um, with the code. And are we able to um, build some of the new innovative housing types? Are we making it too difficult to build on some of the smaller lots where we could have some really efficient development and variety of housing types? Let's see, and for um, our parking standards, it's sort of like we, we do, we dedicate so much land to parking and does this really reflect the values of our community? If we value open space, then let's focus on that a little bit more rather than, you know, making sure we have tons of parking. Um, and I think along with that, looking at those fee and loo um, that come up quite a bit, both for landscaping and for open space. And as the zoning commission, we don't set those rates, but are those rates um, in line with what we need right now and those dedications? And I think that's really important to look at um, moving forward. And I would say in addition to that walkability piece, of course, that's something that's um, dear to my heart, but also really thinking about rollability and we're home to, to Craig Hospital and we have quite a few people in our community that use wheelchairs to get around everywhere. And if they're able to get around, we're able to get around. And I think that's huge and I think that's something that can set us apart from many other communities um, in the region and, and in the nation. So. Um, and then a few things that I think we could continue to look at are things like permeability um, and more green infrastructure and some of our landscaping more for function and not just for form, um, as well as some things that have come up, um, our solar access. And as we're looking at more renewable energy sources, how do we address that in the code for people who are going to be making um, uh, those investments on, in their properties? So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Lipowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Uh.
Thank you, thank you, uh, staff also for putting this together, and Logan Simpson. Um, I'm just gonna go through a couple, a couple notes I had. One was, I'm really uh excited about going through this process and about all of the range of um thoughts that that the council members have shared thus far. I think it's gonna be a really thoughtful process. Um, I think with regards to sustainability, I think something that will be really important is, I think, uh, Councilor Ruck mentioned it, how can we incentivize sustainability and green technology and things like that without putting undue burden on people? Are there ways to kind of offer the opportunity to do that, and we're really encouraging that, um, but it wouldn't put any undue burden? Um, how can we, how can we ensure that families can stay in Inglewood um if they want to grow? Or um, you know, they need a little bit more space than a lot of the smaller homes available, um, and some of the homes are getting really expensive. Um, I think in terms of dimensional regulations, it'd be really important to think through how how prescriptive we are in terms of the dimensional regulations. I think some cities can get so prescriptive that innovation is impossible. Um, but obviously, you don't want so few that you get. And then in terms of walkability, I think the point was brought up really well of defining what that is. Is it, is it just that the streets are safe and secure and people can get to and from places? Or are there, i- is there a definition of how close certain services and amenities are to people um within certain radii? Um, and I think, you know, thinking about um sort of a lot of the elements from the Inglewood forward, how can we kind of bring into the regulations a lot of this sort of conservation, energy conservation, water conservation um into the code and and really try to incentivize that? I think that's all I've got. Thank you, Mayor.
That's great. Thank you. Thanks for everyone's input. I think we'll stop it here, and um I think, uh, Mr. Brookholder, you got some good beginning here from different ways we're thinking. I think there's some continuity in in a lot of it, so.
Very, uh, very helpful conversation. I appreciate everybody's comments very much.
I also think you have a very open group of people to learn, so send stuff our way.
Yep, I will do.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. I really appreciate it. Council, we're gonna take a um a five-minute break at this point too, so let's be back at, let's see, actually, we'll come back at 8:20. All right, so a little reset, just get a little stretcher. Thanks, everybody.
You.
So if you can hear the, can you hear the helicopters in your neighborhood?
Sometimes.
Sometimes, yeah, they're really going tonight. I don't know, one of them must have been nine news or something because it sounded big. Right, so our, our next agenda item is our agenda item five, which is our utilities director, Peter Van Rye and is it? Si- Saiyan Rao?
Siwan.
Siwan, Siwan. Siwan Rao and Carol Molesky with Sand Tech are here to present to council and seek feedback on preliminary results for the water and sewer utility rate and fee study related to connection fees. So this will include CIP funding scenarios and a customer assistance program. Take it away, Mr. Van Rye.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Council. I appreciate the ability to come back and talk about utility rates and fees again. This is the second discussion, progress discussion along this project and we're going to focus on a little bit of, uh, we're going to do more focus on connection fees tonight. We'll go back and talk about some expanded scenarios that we looked at with rates and, uh, and then look for discussion and feedback in terms of how we're progressing through the project and if it's, if it's meeting the expectations at council. So I'm going to start with sharing my screen. Uh, right, and let's make sure of the right one. So can everyone see my screen? Does it look like a PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, and yes, again with me tonight is Carol Molesky and Siwan Rao. They're the ones doing the work behind all of the analysis and numbers here. So, um, I, I need to acknowledge the, the continued hard work that they are doing to get us to where we are today as well as Maria Sabata and her staff with, with finance. Um, we couldn't be doing it without their support as well. So what we're going to cover today is, let me see if I can get this to advance. There we go. Connection fees, a brief discussion on miscellaneous fees, um, some updates, like I said, on the financial plan and then the, um, cost of service, rate design and billing. So we've started that process, but we'll talk a little bit about where that's heading. We want to discuss a customer assistance program and an approach for that and then what the next steps are. So here's where we've been. Uh, you can see that this is the same slide I presented last time. You can see we've completed task one and task two. We've got a number of them that are still in process. And tonight we're going to talk about task seven and, um, uh, in greater detail. So connection fees, uh, this is a slide you saw last time. So these are one-time charges to new connections to finance, uh, the growth portion of assistant capacity. So essentially this is the buy into the system. It's either, it's, it's either the buy into our existing system or it's the cost that funds growth to accommodate, uh, that growth within the system. And so essentially we have system value divided by system capacity and that equals a connection fee. So that's the, there's essentially three different methodologies. And you can see the buy-in method, the incremental method and the combined method. We look at the combined method because we actually have both existing system capacity and some amount of potential growth. So that allows us to utilize that, uh, combined method. There are four different ways to, uh, to develop system valuation. And this is really the core of how we, how we get the, essentially the numerator for the equation, which is, um, and those four are the original costs. That's original cost of the asset when it was purchased. The net book value, that's a cost, uh, less depreciation, original cost less depreciation. Then there's replacement cost new and replacement cost new less depreciation. And so you can see there what, uh, those are adjusted dollars today. And in one case it accounts for depreciation, in the other case it does not. And so if we use the RC NLD, which is a replacement cost new LD, uh, less depreciation method as an example, uh, these are the real numbers for how it, uh, shakes out for our system and, and you can see the, the net system value across the four components, which is the water resources. So that's our water rights system, our, our significant, uh, mountain system, the real, that really valuable, uh, precious water resources system that we have. And you've got the water system itself, which is the water plant and the distribution system. Then you have the sewer collection system and the sewer treatment system, which is the South Platte Water Renewal Partners. And so you can see those, those values have been developed for those systems. And the water resources you can see is, is north of a half a billion dollars in terms of value. Then what we do is we determine a level of capacity and the number, a level of, uh, SFEs, uh, in, in gallons per day. And that essentially gives us an equivalent SFE. So you can see that, that fourth row down of equivalent SFEs. So that's the denominator. So we take this, this net system value and we divide it by equivalent SFEs. And that's how we end up with the, the calculated fee per SFE. And so you can see what those calculate utilizing this RC NLD methodology across the, the four different, uh, components. And so if we look at the, the four different components across the four different methodologies, we end up with these four potential total fees. And if you look all the way to the right, that's our existing fee today is sixty-nine fifty. These, these industry standard methodologies that we've applied show a variation between nineteen thousand five eighty-three is a low to, uh, twenty-eight thousand three forty-five is a high. And, and then you can see the other two are within the, in the middle of that. And so essentially what we, uh, the recommendations that we have are whatever we do, we need to maintain consistency. So if we choose RC NLD for, for the water system, we needed, we should choose RC NLD for the sewer system to make it consistent across both, uh, utilities. Uh, we think that RC NLD reflects the, uh, is most reflective of the value of the system because it looks at the replacement cost if we had to replace it, less the fact that the system is essentially used. So that's the depreciation piece. It's very commonly, it's a commonly used approach across the front range. So we're not, we're not doing anything that's new here. One of the other recommendations is because we now have that, that, uh, understanding of the value of the water resources system, we would suggest actually developing a water resources fee similar to what you've seen in some of the other connection fees of other, uh, districts around and, and water providers around. And then of course, this is something we want to review on an ongoing basis to get it on a schedule where we're looking at it. About every five years, we want to take a good, hard look at this. And so if we look at the, how it shakes out, this is the same table that you saw last, uh, last, uh, month when I presented. And you can see at the bottom is the Englewood connection fee right now, which is sixty-nine sixty. And we're, we're absolutely the, the lowest of the comparison, uh, cities. And this new fee puts us still in the, in the bottom half, but gets us more towards that middle and it, uh, and that's, that's assuming that RC NLD amount, which, uh, is right around twenty-two thousand dollars. So you see, it doesn't put us, it doesn't put us wildly out of whack in terms of what a, a new development would expect. It just gets us to the point where, where, where we're capturing the value and I, and I will highlight the seventeen thousand five oh four in the middle. That's the value of the water system. So, so essentially what that is, is that's the, the system was purchased many, many decades ago and it has increased in terms of its net value. And so as a new person, as a new entity or a new connection buys into that system, we want to make sure that they're buying into the value of that system as opposed to just getting a free ride of, of the investment that was made so many decades ago. And so we charge that today's dollar appropriate amount of what that buy-in would be. And that's at seventeen thousand five oh four. So that's a new way of looking at our, uh, looking at our fees. So miscellaneous fees is, uh, so we're going to move on to miscellaneous fees. Uh, miscellaneous fees, those are, those are the, the smaller fees that we have. Um, so you can see some of the examples there are accounts set up and transfer fees, red tags, turnoff fees, delinquent charges. We, what we're doing with that is we're actually looking at the, uh, level of effort that goes into those fees and then ensuring that the level of effort, um, cost in dollars is matching what we're charging for those fees. And in actuality, we're, we're, we're finding that they're pretty well aligned to the point where we don't necessarily anticipate making a lot of changes to our, our fees, but we'll be coming back with a full, uh, recommendation for where those fees, where we think those, those fees should be. We have a couple of them that we may want to change, but in reality, a lot of them are fairly close. And so that, that's just one of the, that's an aspect that you'll, we'll talk about a little bit more. I just wanted to let you know that we're in progress and it's not looking terribly far off. Okay, is the financial planning process. So as you recall, this is where we spent a lot of the time last, uh, meeting was on the financial model that we've developed. And I think one of the things that, um, I want to remind everybody is that this is a continually dynamic pop process. Once we get this established, it is not intended to be, uh, static at all. It's, it's intended to be something that we continually evaluate scenarios even beyond what we're doing this year to understand what happens if we have changes from an influx of, of different revenue or there's different costs or we have a different, uh, capital driver. Um, I think a good example of this is right now we're, we're applying for some grant funding that we don't necessarily have factored into the model because it's not guaranteed money. But if we are able to secure a grant worth two million dollars to help fund a component of what we're, what we're looking to do in the capital plan, we may have to realign some of the, of the capital plan in order to provide the matching funds that are necessary for that grant program. So a lot of those programs are fifty percent matching funds. And so if we have the opportunity to lever, you know, to leverage money in our dollars in a way where we double it, then we're going to have to go back and look at the effect in this financial planning process. And that's the dynamic nature of this model is, is we're, we're trying to establish a plan moving forward at the same time realizing that that there's a lot of change that could occur based on revenue needs or cost needs. And so within that, what we're, what we're looking at from an objective perspective is, is we've got a few, uh, key performance indicators that we're looking at. And one of them is a reserve fund balance target. And that's a, and we want to have three months of O and M. That's a pretty industry standard approach where, uh, we make sure that reserved in our, our, our balance sheet or our fund balance is three months of operating and maintenance. So if something were to go catastrophically wrong, we at least have three, that three months to continue to operate. Another one is debt service coverage requirement. And so our senior debt service requires a one point one times factor of what the, of the, that, that, that service coverage. So it, whatever our debt service amount is, we have to have a hundred and ten percent of that available. So we make sure that that's factored in and we always have that available. So we can always, we can always pay our debt. We also want to balance this against the impacts to the typical residential customer. And so that's why we look at that average residential customer bill impacts for water and sewer, realizing that if, if someone uses more water, that's going to be a higher bill amount or if someone uses less water, there, there could be a lower bill amount, but we, we try to predict revenue to meet costs based on usage patterns of, of our community. And then finally, on one of the, um, one of the KPIs that we look at is a median percent of CPI funded by debt. And so what that means is if we're, and when we look at the Fitch rating, uh, category on this one, and so they have a set of, uh, of percentages that are associated with, with, uh, bond rating. And so right now we're a double A. So if we were to remain double A, we'd want to, the median level is thirty-seven percent. So you have some that are over, you have some that are under. But if we get wildly over thirty-seven percent in terms of our, our amount of CIP that's debt financed, then we start to get into a point where we could potentially impact our overall, um, uh, our overall financial rating. So we use that as a metric to help us balance CIP implementation as well as, as rate and fee increase in order to, in order to, uh, maintain some amount of, uh, connectivity to those, those rating agency categories. And so for the, the water financial plan, we had the optimized scenario that we talked about, uh, last month, which, uh, included a twelve dollar capital improvement fee through twenty twenty. And, um, one of the things that we looked at in greater detail on that is the, the debt fund amount over to the right here become, it's, it starts to push into a sixty-five percent, which is a high amount. So if you look at this in terms of a chart, the two charts that I would point out are in the upper right-hand corner, you can see where the debt begins today. In, in twenty twenty and then it grows and it grows and it continues to, to grow. And what we want to do is we want to, we want to get that to flatten out. So it's remains more parallel to the blue. And what that would mean is that we maintain a certain proportion of our, of our costs that are, um, that are cash funded versus a certain portion that are debt funded. I think the other one to look at is if you look at CIP funding, you can see in twenty twenty, this is the middle chart, uh, on the lower level. Uh, you can see in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, it's all cash funded. So what that's doing is spending down our fund balance. And then in twenty twenty-two, we inject some debt. And then what happens is as you go into the outer years, the capital is all funded by debt. And so from a long-term strategy perspective, that means that we, we don't ever, we're never actually able to, to fund a certain amount of our capital from cash. And so that becomes somewhat out of balance. So we looked at another scenario where we, where we implemented twelve dollars and then we, then we looked at what if we add a dollar every couple of years. And so you can see on the CI, CIF fee where it's twelve dollars thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. And we still have a high amount of debt funding. And you can see we're still, we, it gets a little bit better in terms of this cash funding, uh, graph, but it's, it's still trending to where we're, the only way we're investing in our system long-term is by doing it through debt. We then looked at what if we look at a, a fifteen dollar CIF and, um, a dollar increase every two years. So we'd be fifteen dollars in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And then it'd raise to sixteen and then seventeen, eighteen. And, and that this debt fund percentage amount is, is when we get all the way out ten years from now. So it projects far enough in advance that we have time to, to account for it and accommodate for it. And so what you can see with these scenarios is that we're starting to, we're starting to level off the, the balance between, the, the cash funding and the, the debt funding, but we're also seeing that we're funding more of cash in here. And so as we start to look at, you know, how to move forward, this, this I think is starting to refine us into a place where we can, we can start to address the problem that we are facing initially. And then it'll give us, it'll put us on a good foundation to continually look at this problem, this, this issue over the next five to 10 years to help, uh, help create that sustainability long-term, um, in a way that rates, that our rates and fees are, um, predictable. On the sewer scenario side, uh, we're, the optimized scenario actually was, was pretty stable. You can see the, the rate amounts are four and a half percent for next year, four point two five for the following year. And then we go down and we actually get down to three percent. Um, and really what you can see on the, the two, uh, graphs that I talked about, and I'll go down to the middle one. As you can see where we have some debt funding in twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five. But then in twenty twenty-five, we retire a significant amount of existing debt. And that's where as in, in twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven and through thirty, you can see that there's a higher, uh, amount that's funded through, through cash. And, and that's where if I go back a slide, you see where we're starting to get to this, these, that one point one ratio that we look at. And it, it, it improves significantly when you get to those outer years. And that's because we retire a, uh, certain amount of debt in twenty twenty-five. And so if we look at the rate survey comparison that we talked about, the, um, currently what we talked about last time was moving from forty-six, forty-eight, which was low to sixty, sixty-nine. And then, um, this fifteen dollar, uh, approach would move us from forty-six, forty-eight to sixty-three, forty-five. So that's just some of the refinement work that we're doing to try and, to try and get to dial into where we think the right, um, proposal is for, for this year as it relates to that capital investment fee. Brief discussion on cost of service and rate development and billing. So essentially what we're doing is we're, we're understanding, this is where we look at how this revenue ties to the individual customer and what kind of billing structure we put together. So right now we have a declining rate block structure, which I think we're one of the only communities on the front range. It does not promote water conservation because as you, as you use more water, it costs less. Um, and so we'd be looking to align more with, with the inclining rate block as well as again, the thing we've talked about, which is the flat rates and, and getting, uh, eliminating the flat rates. So that's the piece that we're, we're in, in process with right now that we'll be coming back next time to discuss with council in terms of how this actually looks from a billing perspective. When we do that, we do test cases with actual customers to see what the effects are on those bills. Everything we've talked, we've talked about in the, uh, in the, uh, charts are assuming, uh, the average bill, but we've got the full, full gamut of people with their water usage. So one of the things that we want, also want to recommend is switching from quarterly to monthly billing. Um, and actually timing the, the switch from quarterly to monthly billing with, um, with this initial rate increase. And that, what that will do is that'll, that'll soften the shock, I think, for, for our citizens as these increases occur and will give them time to, time to plan from a budgetary perspective, month to month. And so in talking to Director Sabata, we might be looking at the end of the first quarter by the time we can actually move to monthly billing, at which point we might propose, we, we would propose to align those two, two events so that when these rate increases actually go into effect, they time with that, that monthly billing. I think that's the, as opposed to doing one month of this substantial hit on a quarterly bill and then immediately then switching to a monthly bill. We think that by pairing these up, it gives the community the ability to ease into, uh, these changes. Last piece I want to touch on in the last, uh, couple of minutes is the customer assistance program. So we recognize that this is a significant adjustment in rates. And, um, so one of the things that we want to do is we want to, uh, account for the fact that we have, we have people that are on fixed incomes and that this is not necessarily an insignificant effect to them. And so there are customer assistance programs all across the country. And we're looking at how to, uh, develop one for the city of Englewood to, uh, abs, to address that segment of our population that may be, uh, may experience significant hardship based on these, these, uh, changes. And so a lot of the things that we consider are eligibility requirements. So is a poverty, uh, senior citizenship, fixed income, what level of discount we allow. Uh, one of the key things is administration. So if we have to administrate, administer a complex, uh, a complex, uh, customer assistance program, it might require some in-house resources that we don't have today. And, you know, so does that become another half an FTE in the billing, uh, area that helps administer this? In other, uh, areas, they utilize their other third parties that, uh, provide this kind of assistance. And then also the funding source. So the funding source can, there's a, a number of possible places for funding source. Uh, but this might be one of the places that, uh, I know that council has discussed how the unfind, unassigned general fund balance could potentially, um, be assist with the adjustment in rates and fees for, for the water and sewer funds. This might be an area where the, maybe the, 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 uh, customer assistance program is actually funded out of that. And that would, that creates that tie between utilizing that unassigned, unassigned fund balance to help mitigate some of that, uh, issue. Here's a couple of examples of organization of, of cities across the US. And there are a multitude of these and, and Sand Tech has access to many of them. And so we would be looking at, uh, setting up something that we think would work for our community and that we could actually, that would actually achieve the goal of actually mitigating the issue for the people that are most in need. So finally, the, the, where we're at in terms of next steps is we want to incorporate any additional feedback from, uh, council tonight, based on tonight's presentation. And then we'll come back in about another month to present, uh, rate structures and adjustments, and then also refinement and recommendation, find more final recommendations in terms of the, uh, the rate percentages, the capital improvement fee, the, the connection fees, all the things that you've been seeing over the last, uh, couple of months building to this point. We definitely have a public outreach campaign that is being coordinated through the, uh, uh, community outreach, um, office within the city manager's office. And, um, and so we're working with them to, uh, make sure that we give people enough advanced notice of these changes so that they can plan for them. And then we have, uh, ultimately twenty twenty-one budget approval. And so I know I went two minutes over, but, uh, hopefully we're, 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 we have time for some discussion.
We're already over. It's okay.
Let's try to help make up.
Yeah, let's do this, council. Um, uh, I know through, three of us saw this at Water and Sewer Board. So perhaps give, um, preference to those who haven't seen it already. And why don't you, um, why don't we just limit it to two items, a question or a comment? And then we'll just keep going through everybody's until we get through them all. Are there any questions or can feedback at this point? Looks like none, Director Van Rye. Member Russell.
Sorry, sorry to disappoint you.
No, 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 it's fine. I knew that someone would finally raise their hand.
I was looking for the raised hand. Um, so the, are we still going to be talking about connector districts and, and I believe we are, right? I do believe that I read that in the.
That's, yes, uh, Councilmember Russell, that is correct. I'm going to go back up to that slide. Um, I'll show you where. So the part that would affect the connector district on this slide is this number. If we, if we choose to move forward with RC NLD as an, as an approach, that amount ends up being nineteen sixty-nine, what is what would be translated from the sewer treatment connection fee to those connector districts, whereas today it's about fourteen hundred. And so it goes up about five hundred and sixty-nine, about, you know, twenty-five, thirty percent to those districts. But I think is also still well within reason in terms of what, uh, sewer treatment, uh, connection fee would be.
So that's only for the sewer connection fee, right? Not the water connection fee?
That's correct. We, we can't, we, we don't translate the water resources, uh, piece of it because we, we don't serve them. The water resource is only within the city of Englewood. And so if the, so a good example of this is if you have a duplex or if you have a, of a single family home and you want to turn it into a duplex, you get one credit for the, the connection, the, the existing connection to the single family home. And then the second connection for the new duplex would pay this new fee in the, in the instance of RC NLD would be twenty-one thousand three forty-six, whereas today that added connection only pays sixty-nine, sixty.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then just one other thought. I, I know here a while back and I haven't done this yet because I think it got put on hold, but I, I think that perhaps we should, one thing we should consider for, um, for, uh, assistance is Salvation Army. I mean, because I do know that the Salvation Army was looking to be helpful to the citizens in Englewood. So that might be something that we could ask them what they would be able to, to do.
We can definitely look into that. And I believe, um, I think one of these, uh, examples utilizes the Salvation Army. Let me see if I can get to it.
That's what, um, reminded me of that. So the city of Sacramento.
Yeah. So, so that might, yeah, I think that's a, that, that's actually a great idea. If, if there are other ideas in terms of other partners that we could work with on that, that would be great. I know one of the things that the Water and Sewer Board talked about as well was, um, the ability to donate on the bill. So to have an ability, if you wanted to, to add, you know, ten dollars a month or five dollars a month for a customer assistance program or something like that, but allow individuals to donate on their monthly bill.
So is it possible to do a combination of these?
Yeah, I, we can set it up how, yeah, definitely. We can set it up, uh, with the, with not just the donation, but potentially a, uh, certain amount of a transfer or look at some other potential funding source. We can, we can set it up how we want just to, um, and then we can also set up eligibility requirements how we would like to, uh, to again, meet the need for the vulnerable members of the community that would need it.
Okay. Thank you very much. I greatly appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation. It looks like, uh, do you need any further direction from us?
I guess the question I would have is, um, we would like to continue to, you know, move forward as is. And I, I guess how are, how's the council feeling about that fifteen dollar, uh, number that we've, we've somewhat refined and landed on? I know last time we talked about a twelve dollar number. This time we, we've looked at fifteen and we think fifteen gets us in a better immediate position. And just in, ensure that, um, council's okay with that. Any of the future scenario planning that looks at, you know, a, a dollar increase two years from now, that would all come in two years when we're discussing this. So that's, that's more planning. It's really just as you, as you look at the percent increase that we're talking about, we're talking about a four percent increase and then a fifteen dollar CIF. And then we can tie that CIF to an actual, to the actual infrastructure investment. And I think we can, I think we do a good job of connecting for the resident, connecting that there's a, that there's, that the that there's, that the fifteen dollars is actually going to asset investment.
Looks like we have some more comments. Member Anderson is first.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Regards to the, the fifteen dollars. Did I understand correctly that you would wait to implement these increases until you, you, your, your suggestion is to wait to implement these increases until we switch to monthly billing?
Yeah, that's, Director Sabata and I actually only talked about it today. It's something that came out of after we, we talked on the Water Sewer Board last week. And, and I got to thinking about the shock of a quarterly bill. With, you know, if you had a quarterly fifteen dollar, it'd be a forty-five dollar increase to the water bill on a quarterly bill. And so we think from a, you know, allowing our citizens to, to plan for it and, and be able to budget for it more effectively, that aligning the two would be better.
Yeah, and I, I think that would be, that, that's something, an idea that, that I hadn't heard at the Water and Sewer Board. I'm glad you brought it up because I think that does mitigate some of that. It's easier to plan for a monthly bill, even if the increase ends up being the same amount. Man, if you're getting hit with four, if you're used to paying a hundred dollars and suddenly it's a hundred and forty-five plus another five percent increase, that's a big, I think that's a big hit for people to process all at once, especially if they don't really know it's coming and have a chance to plan for it. But if they get a smaller bill that has that broken out, I, I think it does help people with paying, planning. People are used to paying most of their bills monthly, so it makes a lot of sense to, to break it out monthly. So I was gonna say, I, I'm really nervous about the fifteen dollar, but I think I can, you know, and I, but I think I can live with it if we wait until it's the monthly, the, if we're on the monthly cycle to implement it.
Yeah, and I think as terms of our implementation and our revenue requirements, if we're delayed three months, it's because what Director Sabata and I talked about was generally about an April first timeframe. So go through the first quarter, still on a quarterly bill, and then switch to monthly billing on, on April first. That's what, seven, eight months from now. It'll give us time to even, even more time to plan for the community to let them know it's coming, as well as time for the billing system to accommodate that switch from quarterly to monthly.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I think in terms of the, the original question, Director Van Rye, I agree with Member Anderson regarding, well, I'm fine with the fifteen, fifteen dollars. At first I was kind of wondering about going to a monthly, but I guess that, that conversation just kind of answered it for me. So I think I would be in favor of that as well. I guess I have a question as well. I'm not sure how to phrase this one. I, I kind of opened a council request to this earlier or late last week. But it kind of has to, I'm, I'm looking back at your financial planning objectives slide where you kind of talk about the KPIs. And I guess just one question or comment that I have is, you know, obviously, and I'm kind of thinking worst case scenario. So I know that we don't happen to have very many delinquent accounts or anything of that matter. But if, you know, if we do get into a bigger recession or a downturn in the, you know, business environment or the economic environment, is there a, is there a point where if there are delinquent accounts or just non-payments that it affects some of these numbers? Or is there something that the city would have to do in order to back some of the debt potentially? In those type of scenarios, I'm just trying to figure out, again, I'm talking like worst case scenario, but just any thoughts on how we would make that up?
Yeah, I think it's a good question. I, I did see the request actually today. I saw it. And it's something that I have not, I have not spent the time to sit down with Director Sabata to understand the magnitude of, of where we're at today versus what we would potentially project. My, my gut sense is that, that things would have to get a lot worse before it really substantially affects our ability to function and operate. But at the same time, if we start to see a downturn in the economy and, and more people are losing their jobs, then the, the backstop for the community would be the customer assistance program, which would have qualification requirements. And if we had the, you know, as long as we understood the funding need for that, that could be a way to help the community bridge the gap i- in that, in that type of unfortunate economic downturn.
Appreciate that, Director Van Rye. I know it's a longer or a larger discussion and a lot more research needs to be a safe place, but thank you very much for answering on the spot.
Sure.
Member Russell.
Thank you. So my question is, this five percent increase and going to the fifteen dollars, is that in addition to the fourteen plus percent that we've had over the last two years?
Well, yeah, so the, so each year that we had the seven percent increase that, that reset the, the, the rates. And so that just, that slowly built up the rate. So those, those increases are, are done and, and over with and got us to the point where our sewer rates are where they are today. And if you recall, I can go back to the slide. The slide that shows where we, oh wait, sorry. Let me just bear with me just a second. You can see right here that, that our wastewater fees right now were, and this is, this is the twenty, the current fee was twenty-three fifty. So it was second lowest of all the other adjacent communities. So even that, that seven percent that we did over the last two years got us to the point where we're, we were just ahead of Littleton in terms of, of what the, we were charging an average monthly sewer bill. And, and frankly, still is well behind where, where a number of communities are along the front range from a comparison perspective.
So with that in mind, I just, I have a question that, I mean, and this is probably for a council request. I know this came up before. Have, have we or can we go ahead and do some research into how the South Inglewood sanitation district came into being? Because I believe the people in that district are going to be penalized even more. So if we could get answers to those questions, to be real honest, I'm a little bit nervous about raising it to fifteen dollars a month in addition to the stormwater plan being increased. You know, seniors, even though you bring it back monthly, they still only have so many dollars, whether it's paid quarterly or whether it's paid monthly. And I think I am concerned about that population and I'm not certain that doing the assistance program can take care of the whole problem. So that's just, that's where I'm weighing in.
Yeah, and I, so I think a couple of things on that. So I have actually talked to, so Kennedy Jenks is the consulting firm that manages South Inglewood. And I have talked to their representative. They are going back and doing some digging in terms of, of providing, providing me their rationale for how they develop their, their charges. And so I would, I, that is an open council request that we're still working. And so we are in discussions with them. I, I talked to them about actually when they, when they do produce what the, the methodology is for South Inglewood, that we sit down with Stan Tech and, and our Carol and Siwan to, to be able to ask more detailed questions to make sure that we understand their methodology and, and how it affects that citizen group, which full disclosure, I am one of those citizens. I, I live in that district. And so it's, it's, I, I want everybody to know that I'm, I'm, I'm someone who experiences that on a monthly basis as well. I think the, the second piece, which is the, the customer assistance program, really that's what we're trying to do is we're trying to mitigate for the bulk of those residents that could experience some kind of a hardship adjusting to this increase to, to help them make that transition so that it does not become such a substantial burden on them, while at the same time realizing that we have a, we have a, we have to make an investment in our water system and the, the significant, the bulk of the community, while it's not, it's not always nice to have, you know, fees increase, can accommodate that in their, in their normal budgets. And when you then look at that, you benchmark that against the surrounding community. If you, if you go to Denver, if you go to Lakewood, or if you go to these other communities, we're still a bargain as it relates to water and sewer. And so we're trying to balance all of that while we're, while we're trying to invest in the water system. Does that help?
It, it does, and I do appreciate that. And so in response to Council or Mayor Protem's question, if we have a significant recession, is there a way to scale back any of these for a period of time if we have to?
Yeah, that's always an option. I mean, we can always, you know, whereas rates can increase, they can also, if, if council chooses to, they can also decrease. What we then have to understand is what's the effect on, on the needed investment and operation of the, of the utility? And so if we have a, if we have, you know, pump stations and things like that that are in desperate need of investment, if we scale it back and the revenue's not there, then, then we're continuing to kick that can down the road. And that's, that's what we're trying to, we're trying to balance across everything.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Director Van Rye. It looks like you've gotten somewhat of a positive feedback.
Yes.
I would agree that we have to go ahead with this as well. But I said that at the Water and Sewer Board, I, I just feel badly that we hadn't done it earlier and that this hadn't been taken care of along the way. But I think you've come up with a plan that can do it. And with the backdrop of the assistance program, which we've never had, I think it's tremendous. So that should help. But I think we got to keep monitoring it.
Okay, well, I will, I'll, I'll, we'll keep moving forward as we've, we've talked about here in terms of the assumptions and, and the approach as we develop the rate structure and then ultimately as we develop the 2021 budget projections.
Is everybody in favor of that? I realize some people didn't weigh in at all. So I'm just assuming you're not saying anything is, you're fine with it. Okay. Great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item six is returning to in-person meetings. Council, we're setting aside some time to discuss the options and the appropriate time, safety precautions that might be needed if we decide we want to return back to face to face. So Manager Lewis has a few things to remind us of, and then we'll do an open, what do you think?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep this very brief. In the staff report that has been provided, I want to thank Director DeAndre and City Clerk Carlisle for their assistance in just laying out some different options that you could consider if you did want to come back. And the one thing that I'll mention is we were asked to consider how much staff time as well as costs that would go into coming back. And so we did rank at the bottom of the memo that obviously virtual would require the least amount of staff time. But probably the community room, if we wanted to start meetings in person, would be the least kind of labor intensive and potentially lower cost because of the lack of complexity of the Plexiglas kind of configuration that we could incorporate with better social distancing in the community room than we could achieve in the council chambers. But certainly there are pros and cons. So I guess tonight, staff would just like to get your feedback on if you want to proceed, what precautions should we start preparing for and working on?
Thank you, Manager Lewis. So council, what are your thoughts? Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. My, my first question is, can you just kind of describe what the setup would look like in the community room, Manager Lewis?
Sure. So similar to how if you happen to be at the meeting before we went to the outdoor meeting, it would be similar to that in that we would spread kind of the U shape or rectangular shape table configuration. We would spread that out where everyone, you know, the tables were six feet apart and the people were probably more like ten feet apart. We would then put Plexiglas on beside each person and in front. And then in terms of the public, we would have the chairs spaced very far apart, kind of in an L shape around that rectangular table configuration for the council. We would be, again, these are all options, but we would suggest that of course masks be worn until people were seated and in their spot where they could social distance. And then they could, your option, they could also just keep those on. And then the other thing we would recommend would be symptom checks at the door. And we would have a couple of facilities where people could take their temperature and do a symptom check. And we would have sanitation stands before and after that people would use before they take their own temperature and that sort of thing. That would be self-reported, but we would encourage that. God, does that give you a good sense?
Yeah, and so we would, we would then have some system, sort of like in the, in the memo, some system set up for public comment for the citizens who are willing to come.
Right, we would have to have a microphone. Each time someone came to the microphone, we would have a staff member that would clean the microphone in the lectern or whatever it might be a podium that they would come up to, but we would disinfect that between each use.
Okay. Well, I think just from, from my perspective and I understand, you know, like something I didn't take into account last time we did this discussion was there may be, you know, some council members who are, you know, have health conditions or stuff that I don't, I don't know about that would, wouldn't feel comfortable coming back yet. If we could do a hybrid version and do both, I, I, from speaking for myself, I would feel totally comfortable in that, the, the community room environment. I have more, I have questions about the council chamber environment since it's, you know, it's got kind of a church pew style setup. It sounds harder to do social distancing for the crowd and for council being on the dais and all of that. But the community room sounds to me like a, a fairly conservative option in terms of getting back together, pretty, pretty safe. But, and, and so for myself, I would feel totally comfortable in that environment. And I'm looking forward as, as soon as we have enough support, I am, I'm eager to get back together and have meetings in person, understanding that, that there are different people with kind of a different approach to the risk associated and all of that. But for myself, just speaking for myself, I'm happy to, to go with the community room option. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protem Sierra.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager Lewis, I guess one thing that I may be missing from here, is there a way for citizens to call in with questions if we were to go back to in-person?
Yes, and I want to thank City Clerk Carlisle and City Attorney McKinney Brown because they have developed a system for public hearings that would allow us to do just that, where people could do that in person as well as call in. So I know that they've coordinated with the IT department to come up with a plan for kind of a hybrid where people could call in as well as do it in person. So I'm sure we could do that for council meetings as well.
Mayor, did you want me to just finish up with my suggestion?
Yes.
So I guess, so, yeah, so I guess originally I was one of the council members that was in favor of going back live when we last spoke about it in June. And truthfully, I was doing it mostly for selfish reasons, just because I'm tired of Zoom meetings. It just felt that I wanted to be back in person. But, you know, just with the reality that we're seeing with cases, not only statewide but nationwide, I wouldn't feel comfortable having citizens line up outside or just expose themselves potentially to other people. Also with the fact that some council members stated that they wouldn't feel comfortable in that setting as well. And, and you know, if there's one council member that doesn't want to come back live, I'm not going to force them to come back live. So I, I, at least at, at this point, I would be in favor of just keeping meetings as is via Zoom meetings online. You know, we have had good participation over the past few weeks with some major items. And at this point in time, I just don't feel that it's necessary. Also, at this point, I'll just say that we should just keep moving forward with the meetings as is.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Sierra. Others. Member Stone.
Yeah, I, I, I'm in agreement with Member Sierra. I think that the data that we're seeing is that things are not getting better right now, not nationally and not in the state. Last I checked, there's still a, an executive order in place requiring that people wear masks at all times while in government buildings unless that was lifted recently. Manager Lewis?
Actually, yes, you're correct. However, the rule does allow, once you're socially distanced and stationary, that you can take off the mask.
Okay, well, it still stands that as of right now, in order to enter a, a public building, you have to be wearing a mask, whether or not you're allowed to take it off once you're sitting down. Yeah, so with that in place, I think that it's an unnecessary hazard for us to be. Yeah, so with that in place, I think that it's an unnecessary hazard for us to be considering this and an unnecessary cost that, as Member or Mayor Pro Tem Sierra mentioned, doesn't seem to actually be solving a problem since it doesn't seem like we actually have a problem with citizen engagement, considering that at the last council meeting, I think that may have been the most citizens signed up to speak in my short time here on council. So I know I don't have as many years as some of you, but that was a pretty large number of people, considering that we decided not to hear them all before having our meeting and asked some of them to wait until the end of the meeting to speak. So I, I do believe that we have found a great solution in Zoom meetings. And I am, you know, I stand by my statements the last time that we talked about this. When I see evidence that things are in a place where it is not dangerous for our constituents, not dangerous for members of council who are in vulnerable demographics or who may have health issues, then I will be more than happy to go back to in-person. Frankly, I hate that you all can see my giant mess behind me every single Monday. This is my, my craft space, so it's always terrible looking. And it's the only place I have to do these meetings with, with everybody. So when you guys can no longer just completely view the wreckage of my creativity, that would be great. But it doesn't seem like now is that time. Thanks.
Thank you, Member Questa.
To Member Stone, I always thought that was a Zoom background to make yourself look busy. I have one at work myself that's got a bunch of books and pens to indicate I'm doing something, which I'm not. To Member Anderson's thoughts is, so Member Anderson, I'm not sure if this is something that was proposed by staff and I missed it. Is there, is the hybrid model potentially where we have some folks that are comfortable going back, members going back in a room and other folks in through a video feed? Is, was that presented by staff? Member Lewis?
I, oh.
Go ahead. Sean, you're muted.
Thank you. And actually, Stephanie may want to comment on this. But the actual, I, I did get a message after mentioning that, that the hybrid in the council format would be quite difficult. I was talking about if residents wanted to call in and give comment, that we could accommodate that. I think the hybrid model of some council members in and some out would actually be quite a bit more difficult, according to information I've received since making that statement.
Okay, okay. I appreciate the clarification. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Member Questa, I'm not going to let you off that easy. What do you weigh in on this?
The numbers aren't going in the right direction. You know, I mean, that's, that's certainly the state here. And actually, can you give us the latest numbers, Sean? I don't think it's gone, you know, terribly trending upward here in Colorado and locally, but, but I thought it was trending upward.
Yes, Mayor, Council, during my COVID report, I was planning on letting you know that as of this afternoon, the Recovery Manager Brad Power and I have had some correspondence with both the county and Tri-County about our concerns with the changing numbers that they've been giving us in the last 24 hours, well, I should say 48 hours, that the counts have inexplicably gone the wrong direction. In other words, they've, like, for instance, the death count is now lower than it was on Friday. And we are trying to get explanations on what's going on. So I'm afraid I don't have final numbers, but the Emergency Management Office has assured me we will have that by the end of the week.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Do I think that we're in a better place now than a month ago when we had this conversation? Probably not. And so I, if, if it didn't work out a month ago, I don't think that now would be, you know, the time that, that everybody wants to go back. And I'm fine to stand by that, too. The, the question remains, when, when do we do it then? And I certainly don't expect any answer now, but, but that's what I wonder. I think, and I know schools are kind of changing still week to week, but we, we've got a lot of folks that are still going back. And so I wonder, when does council cross that bridge? And, and again, we, that's probably an ongoing conversation we're going to have. I'd be happy to just revisit it in a month, see where the numbers are going. But, but keep this going for now as we have been with Zoom. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Member Questa. Others who haven't weighed in. Which are two of you. Member Russell. Member Wink, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with, I agree with most of my colleagues here. I think it's an unnecessary hazard and associated with an unnecessary cost. And as Member Questa just stated, I do not believe we are in a better place than we were when we last discussed this. So my final comment is I am not in favor of moving to in-person meetings.
Okay. Member Russell?
Thank you, Mayor. You really don't need me to weigh in because there's already consensus.
Hey, if you don't want to have a weigh-in, that's fine.
But I, I would like to ask a question. If it is so unsafe, maybe we need to revisit the fact that we have staff in City Hall.
So I take that as you want to go back?
No, I'm just asking, if you all think it is so unsafe, we need to revisit whether we ought to have staff in City Hall. We've got a double standard here.
Would you like to make a statement about whether you want to go back or not? Do you want to make us, do you want to have a conversation about?
I am not making any other statements. I've made my, I've made my statement.
All right, I'll weigh in. I, I actually think we're doing better than we were a month ago. And I'm very, very thankful that we mandated masks. And I'm really glad that the governor supported that and Tri-County did. And I think if we keep up what we're doing, we're going to stay flat and perhaps go down. What I think is going to change is going back to schools. And we don't know exactly how that's going to go yet. And so I would prefer to wait until schools go back because I don't want us to contribute to anything that does not allow our kids to go back. I think it's incredibly tied to the workforce, getting our kids back in school. So I would like to have as little interaction as we can. I have to go back to teach, too, and I can choose not to go face to face or I can do it online. We're still working out all those details, but I just don't want to make it worse. And if it's working like this, and I'd, I'd prefer to stay like this for a while until we know, just to be on the safe side of making really sure that we're continuing to keep this tamped down. And but if, if, if y'all want to go back, I've got all the masking I would ever need. And I will just inflict crazy. Member Stone.
Thank you so much. I would love to entertain if, if Member Russell is suggesting that we open a discussion on reducing the number of staff in the buildings. I would love to have that discussion. I think that that's a great idea, that we should have as many people as humanly possible working from home. And I'd even be willing to entertain a discussion on closing back down some of the public amenities that we did not unanimously vote to reopen not too long ago, that I know that myself and Member Wink voted against reopening. So if that's something that we want to talk about, I'm more than happy to talk about that because I have no problem standing by my reasoning at every level of this discussion.
I'm, so if, if everybody wants to put that back on a study session, we certainly can. So I, two, two members now have raised it. So if there are two more, we can certainly put that back on. Member Questa.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Questa. Sorry.
I, I, Member Russell's point is not lost on me. And I thought when we had this conversation a month ago, it was true, too, that why should we put staff in harm's way if we're not willing to do it ourselves? I think I'm kind of the inverse of, of Member Stone's opinion, which is if staff's going to do it, we should probably be out there, too. Where I think he's saying if we're not going to do it, we should walk staff back. I think either way, I'd be happy to revisit that conversation. You know, and, and I think that depending upon which recreational area, we could have that conversation as well. But I would say this, Member Russell, the point is not lost. Why should we put, put some folks out there if we're not willing to do it ourselves? So I completely agree on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Member Wink. Oh, no, I think everybody's weighed in except Member Russell now, right? Is that it? I think we've got the majority saying let's hold off. Member Questa suggested maybe we wait a month is, and I think my internet's kind of going in and out. Are you seeing me freeze a little bit? Do you want to, do you want to check back in a month and see how things are going? Or do you want to wait until school starts and, and get a feel for that? Member Stone.
I'm fine with checking back in a month. Although I, I think that you have a very valid point about, about schools. I think it's good to, to set kind of a general practice, though. And so far, we've been checking back monthly on this. And I don't see any problem with checking back in a month and then checking back the month that kids go back to school as well. So if we're not back in person by then, I mean.
Great. Member Anderson.
Anyway, yeah, I, I think a month is good and I, you know, happy to keep checking in on months. I, you know, like I said, when everyone else feels comfortable getting back, I'm, I'm perfectly happy to do that unless things go drastically worse. I think, I think things are about where they are. I feel perfectly comfortable with it. But happy to have that discussion again in a month. And it's something I, the initial last time we had discussions is for council to, you know, each council member to think about what it would take. Can you answer that in advance? What, what would it take for you to be comfortable going back? That's a, I think it's a, it's a valid thing to have ahead of time because I'm not hearing from some members of council, a principal, that would, that would tell me they would be willing to go back, you know, at any time. I don't know, I don't know what that principle would be. So just something to think about, but happy to have that discussion monthly until other council members are comfortable. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And so a month, we, we actually have August 31st off because it's a fifth Monday. So that would be on the 24th probably to talk about unless you wanted to wait till the first week of September. And I would suggest that the, the question for me in thinking about coming back is, if you can do something more safely and as efficiently and as broad as we did last week and have all along with safety, then why not do it? It's just like my whole team that I work with. I've told them all you can stay home as much as you need to. You've been able to do it for five months. So except when we're teaching, we have got to figure it out. So if jobs can be done without coming together, that's my cutoff point. So, and I would, I would, I would entertain a conversation about the city again. If there are members of the community and the city building that don't need to be there, then why put them in harm's way till this is a little bit more, you know? But that's a decision that I don't want to, I mean, that's, Member Lewis needs to decide. He's, he's a director, knows his workforce. But anyway, so we will decide, we will talk about it again on the 24th, okay? And that will give us another four weeks on Zoom. And then the next is COVID update.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just go ahead and get started. As I mentioned before, we have presented concerns about the numbers that we've been given in the last two weeks. We will get clarification on why the, the changes have been made. I don't think it's prudent for us to give numbers that we don't have confidence in. But we trust that there are good explanations behind some of these varying numbers. And we'll have that for you by the end of the week and certainly by next Monday for your report, well verbally. I do want to mention that we are now up to, as of July 17th, we had 272 applicants for our grant programs. We've now paid out $616,000 with regard to that. As you know, the governor has closed, done essentially a partial closure for businesses that serve alcohol in which they are closing at 10:00 PM. We are doing some informal surveys with some businesses that have been affected by that to see if, if there is a loss of more than 25% that they could be eligible for another round of grants, which we don't think any of the business, excuse me, the county would bat an eye at for us, you know, opening that back up. But the county did indicate to me on a call last week that they would like for there to be some determination of at least 25% revenue loss as a result of that new order, which for a bar only could actually occur. We also have had 30 applications for that small business reopening and marketing grant, which is really for advertising costs and marketing costs, to really get the word out about, you know, Eaglewood businesses being open and for business. And so we've expended $15,000 on that so far. We have topped $100,000 so far on personal protection equipment, masks, sanitizers, et cetera. We really are prepared for a second wave as needed. That was something that the CARES Act specifically said, prepare, you know, stockpiles of that PPE so that you are prepared for another wave or even a future pandemic. So we have taken advantage of that. We have also gotten some, some funding for structures, particularly at our service center and I believe at the water treatment plant for holding meetings outdoors. So we have had some meetings. We're not really coming together in conference rooms, you know, congregating at all. We do have some meetings that where we can socially distance by 10 feet or more, we'll do that. But the CARES Act is paying for some outdoor facilities that we think will benefit us, not only for this pandemic, for outdoor meetings, but also in the future for employee gatherings. So we are taking, using some of that fun, some of those funds for that, that type of structure at a couple of facilities. But other than that, we are at, not even to the halfway point yet on spending. Even if that's fully spent and we get approval for all of those, we're not to the half point, halfway point on our 3.2 million allocation from the county. We're sitting at about 1.49 million now. And then I'll just close with the fact that we have the first round of reimbursements from the CARES Act. We, we have gotten a number of checks. I'm trying to do the math in my head here. But the, the good news is that we have gotten approvals for almost everything we've submitted, with the exception of a couple of the Neighborhood Resources programs that we had hoped to get some funding for, to really bring people back together. But we have received approval for almost everything we've submitted. And we'll continue to submit projects and get those reimbursements as quickly and efficiently as we can. Glad to answer any questions about that.
Member Questa.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager Lewis, thank you. When you get those letters of denial where they're not going to reimburse for something, did they give you an explanation as well or is it just a no?
No, we get an explanation with, with regard to the, a couple of the things we submitted for the CARES Act for the Neighborhood Resources Program. We felt like we had made a good case for, we need a way of bringing neighborhoods back together during a pandemic where they can't really socialize. But what ultimately it came down to is that is just not a reimbursable expense, according to the federal guidance.
Understood. Very good. Thank you, sir.
Other questions?
If there are no other questions, I would like to just close with one point about things that you're hearing in the community, particularly on social media, Nextdoor and that sort of thing, with regard to a number of concerns that have been raised about local establishments that may not be following masking orders. I think there were some reports on Nextdoor over the weekend about that sort of thing, as well as businesses that are just simply not complying with other orders of the state or Tri-County Health. We are in the process of working with each of those businesses individually. Our impact team is going in. Our liquor licensing staff here at the city are also having conversations with individuals that have been reported to not being following, not following those rules. So I just want the council to rest assured that we are trying to address problems as we hear about them. And we'll continue to do proactive monitoring as well.
Thank you. Our next, you're finished? All right, but thank you. Counsel, are there any reports from board and commissions that you've been at in the last couple of weeks since we've talked about it? Anybody have anything they want to report? Member Questa?
Thank you. Very brief, library has reopened and it is by appointment. I think you're getting for either hour and a half or two hour blocks, but the library has reopened by appointment. Secondly, and I believe I raised it the last time, is that the Historical Preservation Commission would like to come back before council, when an opportunity opens in our studies, study session schedule, to present those, those plaques that they've got and kind of the qualifications of what a business would need to present. It's pretty straightforward. There's not too much to it. Again, it's non-binding once you get those on the side of your wall. But it is something they would like council stamp of approval on and they've got some language drafted now. We're going to get in front of the city attorney just to make sure everything is, is acceptable to her prior to it coming before council. But when there's a gap in the schedule, they would like to come visit us. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. That's great. An update. Anybody, we'll just put that on a, on a city council topic, Siri, unless somebody does not agree with that. I assume everybody does. So we'll just put it on there and then Mayor Pro Tem Sierra and I will keep track of when, when an opening is, probably after the attorneys looked at everything specifically. And then we know we can, we can go forward with it. Great. Member Anderson?
Just a brief report from KEB. KB is moving forward.
Just a brief report from KEB. KB is moving forward with their annual hazardous waste recycling days. And I believe those are coming up on Sep, I want to say it's September 12th and 12th and 19th, I believe. But that's the, that's the only report I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Anybody else? We had Water and Sewer Board meeting, which you saw the presentation for tonight. That was exactly what we did. So nothing new to report there. All right. Council members' choice. We'll start with the alphabetical order. Member Anderson, do you have anything more?
No report tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Member Questa.
No report this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Member Questa, would you be willing to talk about your, what you're going to do as a result of the vote last week? Do you want to send an email to everybody?
Uh, is this regarding the letter of support for?
Yes.
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm still kind of planning out a course of action here, but I'd be happy to send email once I've made a determination to Krista or to the city manager to send out to the group.
I could forward the emails that you've also sent us if they want, but
Sure.
Just want to make sure that council's aware.
Sure. You bet.
Okay. Next is Member Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Public Works for the hard work that they've done in cleaning out the storm sewer system. I'm very encouraged by all that's been accomplished. And actually, I would like to perhaps, I don't know if we need, if we could put this back on the agenda, do we really need the $35 million? If, I mean, I think we ought to reassess whether we need the the storm sewer fee increase to the $35 million level. I mean, given the amount of debris that has been removed from that pipe, I'm not saying that we don't need to do anything. I do think we need to continue fixing, but we might not need to do nearly as much as we originally thought.
Member Russ, could we make that a council request of maybe asking what the impact is of that cleaning out? Is that which?
Yes, I would like to do that as a council request. And then if that council request shows something, is it possible to get it back on a study session?
Yeah. Great. We'll do an impact. Senator Lewis, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to add that you actually have the stormwater system on your agenda for August 17th. So that's coming back to you for a report on S1, S2, and S3. It's going to be pretty good news now that we finished design of that. But we'll be glad to address that either then, but we can certainly do it sooner than, well, August 3rd, I guess, is our only other option, but.
Okay. That would be great. Thank you.
Mayor Portem Sierra.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of items tonight. I'll start with, with the first one for City Manager Lewis. A couple of citizens made me aware of a Nextdoor post about potential explosions, especially around the, I guess, I guess the last one was off of Broadway and Hampton Avenue. Can you kind of give us an update on, on that, City Manager Lewis? I know we talked about it briefly earlier today, but anything that you want to add about that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Portem Sierra. We did receive, we have received since around the beginning of July, two reports of explosive devices being detonated. And I'll be glad to forward those police reports if you like. I did forward those to Mayor Portem Sierra. They are not believed necessarily to be, you know, a bomb that was, you know, or explosive device that was intended to, you know, harm persons. But certainly it has created property damage. There was a business that lost some windows because the device was used so close to the building that it actually broke the windows in a downtown business on the backside. So we are investigating that. We do encourage anyone who has any information related to, you know, activity like that, or if you've seen something suspicious, to please call our non-emergency number at 303-761-7410. And we'll be glad to take that information from you.
Appreciate it, City Manager Lewis. Obviously, it is a dangerous situation for those to be, well, the fact that they're causing property damage. So there is some, some power to it. So I appreciate you looking into that. And then secondly, I guess, so I wanted to bring up, I know the mayor brought up the fact that there is a fifth Monday coming up in August. But looking at the calendar, I was kind of thinking about this over the past few weeks, that we have been working a lot of, you know, extra meetings over the course of the past couple of months. There is an opportunity for us potentially to take September 14th off. It seems to be like light schedule. So I'm just bringing it up to the attention of, of city council, whether or not, you know, the mayor and I could kind of look, as well as working with City Manager Lewis, of potentially having September 14th off. It is a study session. We don't have much on it at the moment, if anything at all. It's right in between the budget cycle. So, you know, the public hearing is going to be a couple of weeks after that date. We finalized basically the budget or not finalize it, but at least have the final discussions of the budget prior to that 14th. So just bring it to your attention if you guys would be in favor of, of us potentially looking at removing the 14th off. If not, obviously we can get something on there, but it looks like a light week. And so just want to throw it out there. Nothing else, Mayor.
Thank you. Next is Member Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to talk a little bit about moving forward or maybe setting some next steps moving forward with our discussion of law enforcement. And I was hoping that we could do something, I, I'm not, not trying to be critical of the process that we're going through, but you guys all know me by now. I get, I get a little antsy sometimes. So I, I want to do something a little bit more proactive. And I was thinking maybe like a task force made up of some representatives from EPD, maybe some staff and maybe some council and some citizens would be a good way of kind of starting to formulate some, some real concrete kind of discussion that's a little bit quicker, back and forth between the community council, staff and EPD. A little bit more nimble and may allow us to bring forward some of EPD's ideas, some of the community's ideas, some of council's ideas on how we can ensure that Inglewood PD is both representative and responsive to the community and also being supported by council and the community as best possible. And I was hoping that we could, we could talk a little bit about that and maybe put together a list of folks for that.
Are you asking us tonight or could we bring it up next week as as something to act on? Or do you want us to go ahead and give you feedback tonight? I haven't thought about it, but it was on my thing to bring up tonight. So I'm glad you did.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, I guess more of what I was intending with that is just, does everybody else think that's something that we should discuss? And if it is something that everybody else thinks we should discuss or a consensus, you know, a majority of council thinks we should discuss, then let's discuss it and start moving on it as soon as possible.
Yeah. Member Questa.
Thank you, Member Stone. A quick follow-up on that. Would this be a permanent group or is this something in the short term? Is we're working through just policing in our city?
Yeah, I'm just envisioning this as proactive and maybe more, like I said, nimble and responsive step in the process that we're already in. Not to establish like a new border commission, but, but, and that's why I use the term task force for lack of a better vocabulary on my part, but you know, just a group of folks that we can pick in a very quick period of time to come together with EPD and staff to start moving forward so that we can bring something back to council that has like concrete steps that have gone through a process between, you know, some representatives of council, some representatives of the community and some representatives of EPD. So that we're all at the table together and we can have a more open dialogue than we generally have through council requests or, you know, stuff like that, that takes a week or two sometimes to, to get a response for, you know, valid reasons.
Understood. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Member Russell.
Thank you. So Mayor, I have a question. What was the next step in our process? I mean, we had a process already outlined. Was this coming back up for council to discuss like the first part of August or?
Yeah, the next step in my, in our minds, and I, I appreciate Member Stone bringing it up because I was hoping everyone would be thinking, what would you want their next step to be? But I, we need to talk about what we heard so far. We, we had a town hall. It was successful in many ways. It was also not very specific in anything we should do. I think the city police, our Inglewood police probably have lots of ideas at this point, given what we've seen. And I, and I think they're chomping at the bit to tell us. And I have some ideas. I think Member Stone does. I don't know about the rest of you. I do think we got to take some next steps now. We did what we said we would do, which is open it up and begin to get perspectives and do some thinking, but I think we got to, we got to take next steps. If we're going to take anything, we've already decided we're not going to do an oversight board. We all determined that, what, a month ago or so? So this would be the next step. And, and I'm glad to go that route if you want to set a smaller group to come up with stuff. I, I would like to us to all have a conversation together about what we've been hearing and learning.
And I actually think that, I, I think that Councilmember Stone has a good suggestion, but I also think that we as a council need to evaluate the things that we've already heard and discuss that together and then go from there to decide what the next steps are and what Councilmember Stone is suggesting.
Thank you. And, and actually in following up a little bit more with what you just asked me, the next, I think in that process was hear the community, let them give input to us and then make some recommendations and bring it back to the community again to see if they are in agreement with it, if we've caught all what we've heard. Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I got kicked off there for a second, so I didn't quite catch what Member Stone's suggestion.
I thought I saw you going. Member Stone, do you want to tell them what you?
Sure. So what I was asking was if, if, you know, at the pleasure of the, of my fellow council members, if we could put together like a joint task force of EPD, citizens from the community, staff and council to start working on and developing what our next steps look like as far as putting forward policy changes, putting forward, you know, ordinances, things of that nature, whatever it might look like. I'm, I'm not saying that those are what it needs to look like. I'm saying that the process that we've been going through has been good, but there are certain aspects of it that make it kind of slow and, and maybe kind of unwieldy in certain ways. I think that Member Russell has a really good point that we need to discuss, you know, what we've heard so far together before we start something like this. But I'm hoping that we can have that discussion like maybe next week and then at the end of that discussion, establish, you know, start moving forward with establishing this, this task force idea so that we can have, you know, stakeholders all at the table together in a more organic and the word I keep going back to is more nimble kind of conversation about what those changes can look like.
Thank you. Yeah, again, I, I thought you were saying something like that when I jumped back on. So appreciate the clarification there. I do think something like that is appropriate, but I would agree that we need to get this back on the agenda, maybe, you know, whether it's next week or, or the week after, but very soon to be looking at it. And maybe we come out of that conversation and go, yeah, the, the stone task force idea is the way to go or, or some other, some other idea, or maybe we just come up with, okay, a task force, but here's the guidance that we're giving that, you know, make sure the task force, what their task is, is very clearly delineated. But I do think something like that sounds appropriate. So, thank you.
All right. So that was going to be really my only counsel, my only mayor's choice thing was to say we need to take next steps with this. So I'm, I cannot find the meeting agenda for next week, Mayor Portem and Manager Lewis. So I filed it away somewhere, but I don't know where it is. I, I think we can get it in next week or the following and maybe one of them's a finance, right? Well, can, everybody agrees we need to come back together, right? As a group, the seven of us to talk about this. Because I think we all have things that we're learning. And then if we decide we want to set something aside, or do you want to go with the task force first and then bring it back? I think that's what we need to know. I would prefer to have a conversation with you all, but I don't want to slow it down either. Because in 90 days, I was hoping we would have something very specific if we were making any changes. Mayor Portem, did you find?
No, I agree with that. I think we do definitely need to discuss it initially amongst us. Looking at the calendar or at least the agenda, we don't have it on for the next couple of weeks unless I'm missing something.
Do we have room for it is what I'm asking.
We could always make room. So we'll figure it out. It may just be a longer meeting, I guess.
Let, let's plan on this and we'll, we'll find room within the next two weeks for it. And then we'll go from there. Does that make sense? Anybody want to do differently?
I, I'd like to hear what Member Wink has to say about it if, if she's got input.
Member Wink?
I've been summoned to the table. Yes. Thanks, Member Stone. I,
I'm not sorry.
I know you're not. So all of the, all of the elements that we are all discussing, Member Russell had some fantastic ideas, Member Stone, you, Mayor, all of them should happen, I do believe. So it seems that we're just trying to sort out the order. I think regardless of the order, council is going to debrief on what we've learned so far before we move over. So I don't really know that it matters. I think, I think let's try and at least, I think we should push to go over what our, that town hall resulted in next week, no later than next week. And I also think at the same time, we should go ahead, moving forward with this fine idea of a task force. I don't think one usurps the role or value of the other. So let's do both right now. Let's move forward. Thanks. Thanks, John.
All right. Well, we, we should have had it so that it was set up to be on tonight so that we could have come right back and had a fresh conversation, but it was already so packed. But we'll try and figure out a way to get it in. Anything else, Member Stone? Nope. Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
And then I think it's Member Sierra. Mayor Portem. No, wink. What am I, already had to go, right?
You didn't already have me go.
No, Member Wink. I said, Mayor Portem already went.
Yes. So I don't have a council report for this evening. But also wanted to talk about policing. So I think that's already taken care of.
Great. Thank you. And that was my one agenda item too, other than saying great work last week. We had a lot of meetings, some of them very long, but productive, especially with the South Plant Renew meeting. I thought that was fantastic. Well done. All right. So City Manager Choice, anything?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I have not, we've been so late in our past meetings and I know we're pushing 10 o'clock, but I do want to give some highlights of things that I think the public deserve to know. And hopefully you all always feel free to forward the City Manager Friday Report to anyone that you see fit constituents. But the most exciting news is that the Parks Department has been awarded $350,000 for Phase Two of Romans Park. So that'll really let us finish that park. It's such good news. I also wanted to report that we have done the research on the water rights question that Resident Doug Cohen forwarded to you all. And the water rights that are in question are, do not belong to the city. Our rights in that particular stream are still secure. And then I also wanted to just let everyone know we've, in the public in, in general, for sure, is that we are delayed right now in our pro, excuse me, not our proactive, our reactive code enforcement on grass and weeds. So we're about a week to a week and a half behind on being able to get to those complaints. However, we have started a seasonal code specialist. He's not actually an officer, but he is going around to every single district in the city on a, on a 24-week rotation and really advising the code staff of a number of complaints, documenting those. And then the officers who are legally authorized to write up those cases are putting those in. So we do have a proactive approach, but right now we are quite behind because of the work that we've been doing in the parks as it relates to off-leash enforcement. We also wanted to let you know that we've got a CIP update coming that Director Sabata and I are working on just to give you an update. As you know, part of the one point, in addition to the one point, As you know, part of the 1.2, in addition to the 1.2 that we cut, that staff cut from the budget, city budget for 2020, we also cut an additional 1.5 million from the capital improvement program for 2020 for budgeted items. Some of those could be delayed, but some of those were cut. We talked to you about that at the time that we did it. And I think it's time for you all to have an update on those projects. For instance, I wanted to let you know that you'll be seeing some work in some of our medians. As you remember, you allocated about $400,000 last year to do median work on some of our major corridors, concreting in some of the medians on Santa Fe, but we're also going to be replacing irrigation, doing some mulching, and some very limited plant replacement and plantings in our meeting, medians along Broadway and Hampton, and then saving the concrete projects in the medians on Santa Fe, because as you know, the state has now started a planning and environmental linkages study on 85 that really, we don't feel like this is the right time to move forward with concreting in medians when we don't really know what that final project will look like if it entails roadway configurations. So there are a number of kind of changes and updates that we want to give you and we'll do that in the coming weeks. And then two last things, Member Russell stole my thunder, but I hope you noticed that the, yeah, that your last report mentioned 300 cubic yards, which is one football field covered three feet deep of debris that has been cleaned out by our contractor from all of the major stormwater pipes throughout the city. But keep in mind, we have miles and miles, so, you know, spread out over many, many miles, that, that sounds like a lot, but it, it, yeah, there's a lot of more work to do there. And then last but not least, as you know, with the stormwater fee increases from last year, we were able to hire two technicians that are cleaning out all of our storm sewer inlets, as well as those smaller pipes. They're working throughout the city. We only have two areas of the city that are left to go and then they'll start over and just keep those really clean and we're proud of the work that's happened there. A postcard is going out to residents, it's already started going out, informing them in flood-prone areas of the things that we're doing with their stormwater fee increases to let them know about that good work. And then last but not least, the spring, summer curb-to-curb sweeping is complete, so hopefully you won't get additional comments. We learned a lot this year and I really want to thank the Public Works Department for being reactive, really revamping their communication methods that go along with that program and just thank all the departments for all the outstanding work that's going on throughout the city.
That is one thankless job. Thank you. Thanks to all of them. City Attorney, any report?
No report this evening.
All right. Thank you. I take a motion to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Good night, everybody. Thanks for your work on everything.
Good night.
Thank you.